It's five o'clock. And I would like to welcome everyone here in the Baker Meeting Room and those joining us online to this meeting of the Bismarck Planning and Zoning Commission. And with that, I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask Sarah to call roll, please.
Commissioner Bitner? Commissioner Field?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Larson? Commissioner Lukens?
Here.
Commissioner Shell?
Here.
Commissioner Schmitz? I know you're there. Mayor Schmitz? Okay, maybe we'll come back. Commissioner Seva? Commissioner Wangan?
Here.
Commissioner Zent?
Here.
Chair Schwartz?
Here.
And Mayor Schmitz, are you there? I'm going to count it.
All right, we'll continue. With that, we'll hit the first item on our agenda this evening, which is approval of the meeting's minutes from our previous meeting. And Commissioners, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Wangan.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Zent. Any discussion? And I'm not seeing or hearing any. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz? Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes. Motion is approved. With that, we move on to our consent agenda this evening. We have three items in our consent agenda. First, North Star Commercial Park, third subdivision, it's a request for a zoning map amendment. And then next is Southland Second Edition, Block 7, lots 1 through 7, and that is a request for a zoning map amendment. And then the final is Silver Ranch Fifth Edition, and it is also a request for a zoning map amendment. Staff's recommendation for all three is to call for a public hearing. Commissioners, what are your wishes? Commissioner Zent?
I'd like to pull up or for more additional information on the consent item A, North Star Commercial Third Edition.
All right, thank you. With that, Commissioners, we have items B and C in the consent agenda. What are your wishes?
Move to approve items B and C of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Wangan. We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? We have a second from Commissioner Zent. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, motion is approved. With that, I would ask Jenny to come up and provide us with some additional information on North Star Commercial Park, third subdivision.
Chairman Schwartz, Commissioners, thanks for allowing me to come up and give you guys a little background on this project. Typically, we receive signed applications from property owners for all of our requests, all the requests that you see. However, our zoning ordinance does grant the authority to you, the Planning and Zoning Commission, or the City Commission, to initiate a zoning map amendment. We've done this on occasion where we are unable to receive signed applications from all owners. I can recall one from last fall, Stein's Fourth Edition, you might remember it. And we did this for Missouri Valley Complex, one of the public hearings on your agenda this evening. And we are asking that you initiate on behalf of the property owners for this particular project. And the zoning map amendment would add temporary firework sales to the existing conditional MA's zoning ordinance for blocks 1, 2, and 3, North Star Commercial Park Third Edition. This subdivision is located north of Bismarck in the southeast quadrant of US Highway 83 and 71st Street. All property owners have been notified by us that we would like to initiate this zoning map amendment, and we have heard back from one of them already, and they are in favor of this change. Property owners would be notified again if you were to call for a public hearing and obviously have that opportunity during the public hearing to address you if they have any concerns.
Okay.
Do you have any additional questions for me?
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Jenny on this item? I'm not seeing or hearing any.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Commissioners, I would ask what your wishes are. To move this agenda item forward.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Zent.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Lukens. Any discussion? And I'm not seeing or hearing any. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Sure. Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we will move on to our regular agenda this evening. The first item on our regular agenda is George Subdivision, Lot 1, Block 1, Lot 2, and it's for a request for a future land use plan amendment and a zoning map amendment. And Lauren is going to provide us with staff briefing this evening.
Good evening, Chairman Schwartz and Commissioners. International Church of the Foursquare Gospel is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from the A Agricultural Zoning District to the PUD Planned Unit Development Zoning District and a future land use plan amendment from the Urban Reserve Midterm Designation to the Community Mixed Use Designation on Lot 2, Block 1, George Subdivision. If the future land use plan amendment is approved, it will alter the urban service area boundary within this area. This request is being made to facilitate a religious institution campus on this lot that would include a variety of educational, social, and commercial uses. The request is on a project area of 22.85 acres and is located northeast of Bismarck, north of 43rd Avenue, and on the east side of 80th Street Northeast. Staff have noted concerns about the ability to provide life and safety protections for the proposed uses without city infrastructure available at this time. Based on the narrative provided by the applicant, they are aware of this interim site constraint. Water would be provided by South Central Water Resources, and they intend to use a drain field for their sewer. They have noted that if fire suppression is required, storage tanks would be provided. City staff and county highway and fire staff have noted that the current access point onto 80th Street Northeast should be sufficient for the proposed first phase of development. George Drive to the north of the lot is not yet built, in part because only one half of the right-of-way is currently dedicated through that subdivision plat. However, a second access point onto George Drive would be an option in the future. As development in this section and surrounding areas increases in the future, further discussion on the development of George Drive may be necessary. Staff have noted that a traffic impact study may be required in conjunction with subsequent phases of development for that. Adjacent uses for this area include agricultural uses to the north and west, agricultural uses and a central power maintenance facility to the east, and the Burley County roadway maintenance facility to the south. The property has been identified currently as urban reserve midterm, and those areas are suitable for urban development but are not projected to be annexed by the year 2045. The public has been notified of this request. A notice was published in the Bismarck Tribune on February 14th and 28th, and seven postcards were mailed to owners of nearby properties on February 14th, 2025. Gibbs Township was notified of this request on December 26th, 2024, and provided a resolution of support. At your previous meeting, you did call to continue this public hearing just to facilitate additional discussion between staff and the applicant. To my knowledge, staff has not received any inquiries or formal comments regarding this This request was evaluated according to standards contained within the comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and relevant state law. The proposed zoning district would allow a religious institution campus, and that would allow a variety of uses. Based on the PUD narrative, religious institution and sports recreation facility for soccer are intended for the first phase of this development here. However, the current surrounding uses within this area may make residential development less likely and desirable in this section. Certain development standards are included within the PUD to help alleviate any of those potential incompatibilities between this proposed development and current or future adjacent land uses to the surrounding areas. The proposed PUD ordinance notes that the maximum building footprint of the sports facility would be 80,000 square feet and would have a maximum height of 80 feet. Additional landscaping, parking, lighting, screening, and sign requirements are noted within the PUD ordinance and are intended to mitigate off-site impacts to those surrounding properties. Based on the exhibit submitted with the PUD, the current stormwater and drainage easement on this lot will need to be released and replaced through the city's plat modification process. As a result of all findings contained in the staff report, City of Bismarck staff find that the proposed zoning map amendment and future land use plan amendment would not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the zoning map amendment from the A Agricultural Zoning District to the PUD Planned Unit Development Zoning District and a future land use plan amendment from the Urban Reserve Midterm Designation to the Community Mixed Use Designation on Lot 2, Block 1, George Subdivision, with the conditions that an application for a plat modification request to release and replace the plotted stormwater and drainage easements on this lot be submitted prior to a public hearing with the City Commission. An approval of that plat modification is granted by all entities and recorded in conjunction with site plan approval. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Commissioners, questions for Lauren. Lauren, the only question I would have, I'd ask is, what is the plan? And maybe this is a question better for the folks who are developing. What is going to be the process? What will be first and next?
That's a great question, Chair Schwartz, Commissioners. So based on the narrative that I believe is within your packet as well, it looks like their first phase of development would include that church and that sports facility and worship center. Of course, the applicant can surely provide additional information to that.
Okay, very good, thank you. If there are no questions, thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
With that, I'll open up the public hearing on both of these items. Is either the requestor or a representative?
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. My name is Larry with Swenson Hagan Engineering, just representing the church on this one. Just a few things to add to what Lauren had already presented to you. Yeah, first phase would be the church and the sports facility. Some of that, of course, is dependent on prices that are going to come in. The sports facility could be a rather pricey construction project, but that is the goal to have that in the first phase. Additionally, we did meet with Burley County Fire and with the Burley County Engineering Department to determine access and what would be necessary at this point for facilities like this. Generally speaking, they were on board with this being, as far as the first phase goes, just that single access point that exists on 80th right now. At some point, the adjoining landowners, hopefully to the north, will plat, and that other half of George Avenue will come in, and so that will provide another access at some point. That doesn't, really not up to us at this point. That's somewhere down the future, somebody will have to handle that. But if you have any questions directly to this, I can try and answer them for you.
Commissioners, questions for Landon? Commissioner Shell?
Landon, as it relates to the conditions proposed by staff to have the plat modification request to be submitted, but then the actual plat modification to not be granted until site plan approval, does that work with your client's timeframe and schedule proposal?
Thank you, Commissioner Shell. Yeah, that would be the goal for us, simply because at this point, the site plan is a little bit down the road. We're not exactly sure where the new stormwater easement would end up, or even its size. So right now, we would certainly submit the application to vacate the existing easement, and then as we get a little further down, we could hone in on it a little bit better, and therefore, we're not doing it twice.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, additional questions for Landon? My only concern, Landon, again, was the shared approach coming in there. And, you know, I don't know what kind of an agreement is with the existing landowner up there on the north side, but wondering if that is a long-term plan? Will it get moved down the road at some time? I understand, you know, that's an optimum location because it's at the crown of the hill there, and it's probably the safest, but it seems kind of strange.
You know, it's a great question. Part of the issue there is that 80th Street is an arterial street, and there's going to be limited access off of that road anyway. So we're not that concerned about maybe having some cross-traffic issues right there. There's going to be very few access points on 80th. At this point, that's really where we're stuck. I don't perceive the city or the county really desiring another access point further south for this site.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And I'm not seeing or hearing any, so with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Lauren, any final comments?
No additional comments.
All right, thank you. With that, Commissioners, staff recommends approval with conditions of the future land use plan amendment, and they also recommend approve with conditions the zoning map amendment. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve with conditions.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Wangan with conditions?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Zent. Do we have any additional discussion? And I'm not seeing or hearing any, so with that, Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we move on to item B, which is Municipal Seventh Subdivision, and I believe this is a request for a major subdivision final plat. It was continued from our last meeting, and Isaac is going to provide us with staff report.
Yes, thank you, Chair Schwartz and Commissioners. Our second regular agenda item tonight comes to us from the City of Bismarck, who are requesting approval of a major subdivision final plat currently titled Municipal Seventh Subdivision. It was formerly known as Fuller Fountain Subdivision. That name was changed to align more closely with standard naming conventions for the City of Bismarck. I'll provide a little general overview again, just so we're all on the same page, and then we can get to addressing the reasons of why it was continued at the previous meeting. So just for everyone's awareness and for the folks at home, this project is located east of Bismarck, along the south side of Apple Creek Road, as shown on the screens there, between Yegen Road to the west and 66th Street northeast, southeast on the east side. And this project consists of a one-lot-in-one-block subdivision with a total area of 2.29 acres when you include the rights-of-way on the plat and 1.62 acres when you exclude those rights-of-way. The land surrounding this product, the east, south, and west, is all currently undeveloped or agricultural land. And then on the north side, there is some residential land, either Zone RR or R5 Residential. The plat is identified in the future land use plan as parks and open space, as you can see on those screens. Areas in the parks and open space designation are described as being kept in a largely natural state, providing various important functions for the community and ecosystem. So you did see this at your meeting in February, February 26th, and at that meeting, there was discussion about the section line rights-of-way on the plat. If we go to, yes, so on, at the previous meeting, there was discussion about the section line rights-of-way. So as you can see, well, hopefully see, it was also in the packets as well. The plat is at the intersection of two different section lines. The east-west section line on the north side of the plat is the boundary of Lincoln Township Section 1 and Section 12. That is currently Apple Creek Road. And then the eastern boundary of the plat is the boundary of Lincoln Township Section 12 and Apple Creek Township Section 7. That is not constructed as a roadway as of right now. Section lines are public rights-of-way. They are automatically statutory public rights-of-way according to North Dakota Century Code. The previous form of the plat did not include that statutory right-of-way, and statutory right-of-way outside of city limits are automatically existing, and they can be vacated but only vacated via an action by a county commission. Therefore, if that previous version of the plat, which did not include that statutory right-of-way, were to be approved and recorded, there would need to be an action by the county commission to decide whether or not to approve that vacation. There was discussion about the merits of including or vacating that right-of-way there, and ultimately, the commission chose to continue the discussion on the public hearing so that there could be some further staff discussion. If you can hopefully see on the screens there, this version of the plat does include that 33-foot statutory right-of-way on this side of the plat. There would be an additional 33 feet on the east side, outside the boundary of this plat. But, long story short, that is included on this version of the plat. If we go to the next slide, part of the reason it was not included previously was because the entire boundary of this plat is within the special hazard flood area. That does not necessarily mean that construction of a roadway would be impossible there, but these areas are the most likely to flood and the most likely to see various challenges from flooding. So any potential construction there for a roadway would be difficult. But again, we are including that in, it is included in this version of the plat. So the public was duly notified of this request originally via publications in the Bismarck Tribune on February 14th and 21st, and 12 postcards were mailed to nearby owners of nearby properties on February 13th, 2025, and then an additional notice was published in the Bismarck Tribune on March 14th and 21st due to that name change. To my knowledge, there was one public comment prior to the original public hearing, but to my knowledge, there has not been any additional public comments prior to this public hearing. Therefore, as a cumulative result of all findings contained in this staff report, City of Bismarck staff find that the proposed major subdivision final plat would not adversely impact public health, safety, and general welfare, and that it is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and relevant state law. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the major subdivision final plat titled Municipal Seventh Subdivision. Does the commission have any questions for me at this time?
Commissioners, questions for Isaac? And I'm not seeing or hearing any, Isaac? So thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I will open up the public hearing for this agenda item. Is there anyone that would care to step up and address comments to the commission on And I'm not seeing or hearing any, so I'm going to close the public hearing. With that, Commissioners, this is a major subdivision final plat request, and staff recommendation is for approval. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Zent?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Wangan. With that, I would open this up for discussion. One of the things that I noticed is that some, it seemed like some earthwork and construction had taken place on this particular piece of property after we had last discussed it. And I was hoping that maybe Daniel could perhaps provide us with a little bit, more or less, some education in how the process works and when construction can begin in the process of developing a piece of ground.
Sure, thank you, Chair, planning commission. So that is in fact true. I did check with one of our public works directors, or our contractors out on the site now, with some heavy equipment, doing grading, site preparation work for this project. The way our process works for this site and every other is that any site preparation, moving dirt, so forth, is okay prior to issuance of a building permit. However, we will not issue a building permit until the plat is recorded. So they have actually, in this site, they have submitted a site plan already. So what we do is we hold the site plan until the plat gets recorded, and then we approve the site plan, and then the building permit follows, and then the actual construction can occur. But they do have the freedom to use the time prior for site preparation.
Okay, very good, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Daniel on that? Or is that? Thank you. With that, Commissioners, again, staff recommendation is to approve. We have a motion and a second on the table. If there's no additional discussion, Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Wangan?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, motion is approved. With that, we move on to item C in our agenda, which is South Meadows Third Edition, B2. And Lauren is going to provide us with staff report on this. It's a request for a future land use plan amendment, a zoning map amendment, and a minor subdivision final plat.
Thank you, Chairman Schwartz and Commissioners. Vestcore Inc. is requesting approval of a future land use plan amendment from the urban neighborhood designation to the neighborhood mixed use designation, a zoning map amendment from the RR Residential and R10 Residential Zoning Districts to the Conditional RM20 Residential Zoning District, and a minor plat titled South Meadows Third Edition. The request is on a project area of 3.98 acres and is located in southwest Bismarck, west of South Washington Street, in the southwest quadrant of the intersection of West Burley Avenue and Meridian Drive. The proposed plat is a replat of lots 1 through 12, Block 1, South Meadows Second Edition, and Lot 1, Block 1, Burley Avenue Edition. This request would allow the opportunity for multifamily residential uses within this area. A minor plat titled South Meadows Third Edition was previously approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2021 and the City Commission in 2022. However, that request was withdrawn in 2022, and the plat was never recorded. Reusing the plat title, South Meadows Third Edition, for the current project conforms to our standard nomenclature and practice for subdivision plats. Adjacent land uses included single-family and two-family dwellings to the west across Meridian Drive, two-family dwellings in a park to the south, multifamily dwellings to the east, and single-family dwellings to the north across West Burley Avenue. The property has been currently identified as urban neighborhood. However, the change, the proposed change in zoning would facilitate that need to change that future land use plan amendment designation. The public has been duly notified of this request. A notice was published in the Bismarck Tribune on March 14th and 21st, and 46 postcards were mailed to nearby owners of adjacent properties on March 14th, 2025. To my knowledge, staff has not received any inquiries or formal comments regarding this request. This request was evaluated according to the standards contained within the comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and relevant state law. Site access will be from Meridian Drive for this area. The proposed zoning district would have conditions related to landscaping, lighting, and access point placement to mitigate off-site impacts to surrounding properties, including those on the opposite side of Meridian Drive. As a result of findings contained within the staff report, City of Bismarck staff find that the proposed future land use plan amendment, zoning map amendment, and minor plat would not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the future land use plan amendment from the urban neighborhood designation to the neighborhood mixed use designation, a zoning map amendment from the RR Residential and R10 Residential Zoning Districts to the Conditional RM20 Residential Zoning Districts, and the minor plat for South Meadows Third Edition. Do you have any questions for me?
Commissioners, questions for Lauren. Commissioner Shell?
Lauren, we're talking about the zoning change, but that last exhibit that you had up on the screen had a site plan, so maybe, could you just maybe address for the group? From your understanding, would the site plan that was on the screen generally conform to the conditions that you're proposing?
That's a great question, Commissioner Shell, Chair Commissioners. So that site plan that you see on there, staff just asked the applicant to provide a little bit more of an updated idea of what would be going on in this site, and the proposed site exhibit on here indicates the different landscaping aspect, as well as the potential location for that site access on to Meridian Drive, which would more or less conform to that, those conditions within the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions for Lauren? Commissioners Zent?
Lauren, is this a one-level building, or is it going to be apartment building with several stories?
Based on discussions with the applicant, it's proposed to be a multi-level building. I feel like the applicant would be able to provide more information if he so choose.
All right, last call. Any additional questions for Lauren? Thank you, Lauren. This is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing and ask that Landon step to the podium and address us.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. Yes, representing Vestcore on this property, just a few things to add to what Lauren had mentioned before. Yeah, this property has been through the process a couple of times, twin home construction for the most part. It seems to be that just the finances are just not working for this particular site. When people propose the twin homes, the numbers are not working for them. So we're coming in a little heavier, a little heavier density here. RM20, we are adjacent to RM30 to the east, so we're ratcheting it down a bit on the amount of density there, the amount of allowable units in there. This This would be a multifamily building. The main floor would be, or the first floor, I should say, would be garage units, or underground parking, I should say, or main level garaging. And so that eliminates about half of the parking spaces that we would normally have in a parking lot. So it eliminates some of that paving, some of that concrete that really causes issues with multifamily sometimes. Of course, also the additional landscaping that would be required, and then trying to line up our driveway, and as you saw in that site plan, our driveway lines up with the driveway across the street. So it eliminates some of that lighting issue here, that typically can be some of the problem with multifamily in this area. I do have some elevations, we, an architect had, had sketched up some elevations for us for the building, if you guys wanted to see them. I don't think they were included in your packet. We have those for you if you'd like to take a look.
You would be great to see them. Thank you.
So you can see, it's, it's an L-shaped apartment complex there. They've made it aesthetically very nice. I think it'll blend in with the neighborhood a lot better than what you would typically think of an apartment complex. These guys are looking for a little higher-end product right here.
Commissioners, questions for Landon? Commissioners Zent?
This answers my question.
It does, okay. Thank you. All right. Landon, thank you.
Thank you.
It answered mine also. With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And I'm not seeing or hearing anybody, so with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Lauren, any final comments?
No additional comments, thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, this is a request for a future land use plan amendment. Staff's recommendation is to approve. It is also a request for a zoning map amendment, and again, staff's recommendation is to approve. And finally, it's a request for a minor subdivision final plat, and staff's recommendation is to approve. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve as presented.
Thank you Commissioner Wogan, we have a motion to approve. We have a motion from Commissioner Zent, a second. With that, commissioners, any additional discussion? And I'm not seeing or hearing any, so with that, Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Wogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Schell?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we'll move on to item D in our regular agenda, which is Williams Survey, Block 82, part of lots 9 through 12, and it's a request for a zoning map amendment. And Jenny will provide us with staff report this evening.
Thank you Chairman Schwartz, Commissioners. Travis Zinker is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from the RM30 Residential Zoning District to the CG Commercial Zoning District on the south 16 feet of Lot 9 and the west 106 feet of lots 10 through 12, Block 82, Williams Survey. This request is located in central Bismarck, north of East Main Avenue, in the northeast quadrant of the intersection of North 12th Street and East Broadway Avenue, and consists of 10,226 square feet. You considered this request at your meeting last month and called for a public hearing. If approved as proposed, the applicant has indicated the property would be developed as a barber shop. The proposed zoning map amendment is within an area designated as community mixed use in our land use plan. The community mixed use designation includes a mixture of commercial and residential uses, which would align with this request. Additionally, the neighborhood is in transition. It includes a mix of zoning districts and uses and is suitable for infill and redevelopment. The public has been notified of this request. A notice was published in the Tribune on March 14th and 21st, and nine postcards were mailed to the owners of nearby properties on March 14th. We did receive one phone call about the project, neither for or against, just curious. The request was evaluated according to our standards, standards contained in the comprehensive plan and the Bismarck Code of Ordinances, as well as state law. As a result of the findings contained in the staff report, staff find that the proposed zoning map amendment would not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare, and is consistent with our comprehensive plan, Code of Ordinances, and state law. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the zoning map amendment from the RM30 Residential Zoning District to the CG Commercial Zoning District on the south 16 feet of Lot 9 and the west 106 feet of lots 10 through 12, Block 82, Williams Survey. Do you have questions?
Commissioners, questions for Jenny? I'm not seeing or hearing any, Jenny.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll open up the public hearing on this agenda item. Is either the quester or a representative here to speak? Sir, if you'd put your name on the log and introduce yourself, it would be wonderful.
Sure. Hi Commissioners, I'm Travis Zinker. I'm the barber shop owner of currently Val's Barber Shop, right on 8th and Broadway, and I'm just looking at a future property, possibly to build a barber shop that I can own instead of rent. Yep, any questions?
Commissioners, questions for Travis? That'll definitely give you a little more space to work with, won't it?
Yeah, and I currently have a two-chair shop, and I'd like to have it maybe a little, possibly a little bigger, and then with some off-street parking, but I would work with you guys on that, how you guys want to set it up. Okay, anything?
Sounds good Travis. Again, any questions for Travis?
Thank you.
You're good, thank you.
Yep, appreciate it.
With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And sir, if you would put your name on the log and introduce yourself?
My name is Lee Lundey, and I've got the unfortunate Viking license plate since 1981, so I've had misery going on. I own Viking Builders, and I am here to present a different point of view on that zoning RM30. First of all, I want to thank you gentlemen for participating, volunteering. I'm doing the same thing. I'm the special, I'm on the Special Assessment Commission for Burleigh County. Before that, I worked for the state, and I'm the state appraiser. 1,104 policyholders, over 9,000 buildings, from an Anamooch Park Shelter to the $200 million capital building. So I come with an awful lot of experience. You currently have this property at RM30. It provides 10,000 square feet, according to Swenson and Hagan. I can put four twin homes on it. The budget is 1.4 million for it. It would be, the driveway would not go out into the east Broadway, which is, and it would be coming from 205 North 12th Street. The sewer would be running east and west on 12th Street. We're trying to make this so that we have people who are volunteers for the hospitals. And as one lady explained, she's within walking distance, and her husband is also a volunteer in, at the other hospital. So the location is really ideal for people who, older people, that, to participate and walk, because they're doing volunteer work right now, and they're constantly being subjected in essence to sometimes parking and whatever. So spring, summer, and fall, the people have pointed out that they would be able to participate, walk to the hospitals, volunteer. And as one gentleman said, that when he's downtown, he'll make a point to walk over to the Peacock Lounge, and when whatever, so you have some spillover business that can take place as close as this is. I believe that the RM30 should stay like it is. I believe that I prevent, present a better situation. $1.4 million, I think I know how to estimate after years with the state and the $200 million state capital building. So I'm also working with the city of Mandan, and I'm doing the, the doctor's house that's on 6th Street. It's, it's 1940. So I, I believe that the, the, there's a house on the corner that's 1913. The guy wants to sell it, and I want to buy it. Providing that you maintain the zoning of RM30, I will certainly do that. And I'm working with Swenson and Hagan, and they're telling me that we can lay out this entire works. These are about 1,600 square foot, no, no upstairs, no basement, big two-car garages. And so I believe that this would actually benefit people who come from the east going down Broadway heading for the hospitals would be going right by this place. This is not made like some kind of barracks or continuous building, and none of that, what I call trashy looking stuff. Okay? So with that, I would, I'm requesting that you maintain RM30, because I think the city of Bismarck could use some more downtown, where you have multiple uses, where people start to gravitate downtown. I've done two historical houses downtown Bismarck, and we have a lot of young people that are restricted by exactly what they can do and what they cannot do. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to hopefully answer it.
Commissioners?
I've got a Swenson and Hagan guy over there, I didn't know he was going to be here, I'd let him do all this stuff.
Commissioners, do you have questions for Lee? Commissioner Schell?
Lee, do you have a, a purchase agreement for the property or anything along those lines?
No, you cannot do, they have a letter of intent signed, and so the realtor could not have, once a letter of intent was, the only thing I could do is to say I have a, a better position, but legally you cannot have two letter of intents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, additional questions for Lee? Sounds good, thank you. The podium is open for others that would address this agenda item. And I'm not seeing or hearing anybody, so with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Jenny, any final comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, commissioners, the request is for a zoning map amendment. Staff's recommendation is to approve. What are your wishes?
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Schell.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Wogan. With that, I'll open up the floor for discussion. Is there any additional discussion on this agenda item? Certainly Commissioner.
So right now, St. Az owns this.
That is my understanding.
So until somebody else owns it, why would we change the zoning? Because they both have good points. He wants to be a barber shop, he wants to build, so in the end, whoever buys it, we're sort of going backwards if we change it now, and he buys it. So I think we'd sort of have the cart in front of the horse.
Commissioner Schell?
Commissioners, Commissioner Field, I guess I, I would view this as something common in a commercial real estate, where you have a due diligence period, and you're, you're able to, you know, purchase a property conditioned on getting the zoning changed, getting a plat approved, whatever that thing might be that you need to build, the thing that you, you desire. So I view this as kind of more of a commonplace type thing, and I'm guessing everyone had an opportunity to purchase this from St. Az, or CHI, whatever the official owner, ownership name would be. And this, we're, we're dealing with the first one. I'd like to look at this issue on its merits, and if we believe this is compatible, then it really wouldn't matter if there's another guy that wanted to do something with it, or 12 other guys that are doing something with it. I want to view this issue on its own merits alone, is how I'm looking at it.
Certainly, we'd have to move it. So if he ends up buying it, then we have to move it back to residential.
I, Commissioner, yeah, if, if, if in this due diligence process, there was something that came afoot, that they weren't able to move forward with that concept, I would think that there'd be a potential that we'd see a zoning change again, here as well as any other property that's out there in a similar circumstance.
Yeah, I actually, I have a purchase agreement with, with CHI, and the only reason I'm not, haven't purchased the property is because I want it to be commercial, so I can build the barber shop. So that's why I haven't, you know, done that. That's why, yeah, like you said, exactly, due diligence, that's why we have it in the contract. So I mean, if, if it goes through, then I'll purchase the property probably next week. So, okay.
Travis? And I guess I'm not familiar with a intent to purchase. What kind of weight does that carry?
Um, as far as weight?
Legally, legally.
Legally, if it doesn't get approved, then I can basically walk away from the project.
Okay.
And if it does, then I can, I can go through with it, which I want to do, yeah.
Okay.
I feel like it would fit in pretty well with the neighborhood there, and, and the future plan of that entire area is to switch it to CG in the city's plan, so.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other questions? No?
Chair, if I may add a piece of information?
Yes, Daniel.
St. Alexis Medical Center did sign an application form for this. We do require that in these situations, that both the seller and the potential buyer sign the request, so there, we know that the seller is amenable to it as well.
Okay, very good, that's good to know. Commissioners, any additional questions, or discussion, I should say? If not?
I think he answered my questions. If you have an executive purchase agreement?
Should be good to go. Okay, thank you Commissioner Lukens. With that, if there is no additional discussion, we have a motion on the table to approve. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Schell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we'll move on to item E in our regular agenda, Sonnet Heights Subdivision First Replat, Block 5, Lot 1, and it's a request for a zoning map amendment, and Lauren is going to provide us with staff report.
Hello again Chairman Schwartz and Commissioners. Kevin Fisher, L. Construction LLC is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from the RM30 Residential Zoning District to the R10 Residential Zoning District on Lot 1, Block 5, Sonnet Heights Subdivision First Replat. The request is on a project area of 31,226 square feet, and is located in north-central Bismarck, east of North Washington Street, and north of East LaSalle Drive, in the westerly quadrant of the intersection of Normandy Street and Calver Drive. The request would allow the opportunity for single and two-family residences. The applicant did note that, that there is the potential for the lot modification on this current lot, to split it into three separate parcels. Through that discussion, it was noted that a plat modification to release portions of the non-access line would also be required as part of this development idea. The plat modification was seen by the City Commission within the last month, and it was conditionally approved with the condition that this zoning map amendment would be approved. That is noted within your packet as well. Adjacent uses for this area include single-family residences and townhomes to the north and east, townhomes and condominiums to the south, and single-family residences to the west. The property has been identified as urban neighborhood in the future land use plan, and those areas are just places for quiet enjoyment of home life. The public has been duly notified of this request. A notice was published in the Bismarck Tribune on March 14th and 21st, and 46 postcards were mailed to the owners of nearby properties on March 14th. To my knowledge, staff has not received any inquiries or formal comments regarding this request. This request was evaluated according to standards contained in the comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and relevant state law. As noted in this section of the staff report, the proposed zoning map amendment would not provide a differentiation in housing types or mixes, or a mix of use in relation to the surrounding area. However, it would also not negatively impact the surrounding area for this proposed use. As a result of findings contained in the staff report, City of Bismarck staff find that the proposed zoning map amendment would not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare. Therefore, staff recommends approval of a zoning map amendment from the RM30 Residential Zoning District to the R10 Residential Zoning District on Lot 1, Block 5, Sonnet Heights Subdivision First Replat. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Commissioners, questions for Lauren? And I'm not seeing or hearing any, Lauren, thank you. With that, I'll open up the public hearing. Is either the developer or the quester here?
Thank you again Chair Schwartz, representing Kevin Fisher Construction on this one. Yeah, from just a little bit, Dad, what Lauren had said, you can see on that map, this area has developed a little bit more into the twin homes and single-family homes, so that's also the developer's plan. We haven't submitted a lot modification yet, that that would create those three lots that he's intending to build. Like to get through the zoning process before that happens. At this time, the, the intent is probably one twin home and one single home, but possibly could be three single-family homes. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Commissioners, questions for Landon? And I'm not seeing or hearing any, Landon, so thank you.
Thank you.
We're all hearing that, right? That's not just in my head?
Say, Mike, you might want to mute your microphone. Say, Mike, you might want to mute your microphone.
You can call me, you can call my cell number because it's after hours. 701.
With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And I'm not seeing or hearing any. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Lauren, any final comments?
No additional comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, Commissioners, this is a request for a zoning map amendment. Staff recommendation is to approve. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Wogan, a second from Commissioner Zent. Any additional discussion? And I'm not hearing any. So Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Wogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes. The motion is approved. With that, we will move on to item F in our regular agenda, Missouri Valley Complex, block one, lots one and three through 19. And it's a request for a zoning map amendment. And Isaac is going to prove.
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner?
Just to be transparent, and in case anybody would feel there's a conflict, I just want to make sure everybody's aware that I do work for Burley County and the property owner is Burley County that's bringing the project forward. So I just wanted to check with the board members to see if anybody felt it was a conflict.
Do you have a financial interest in it in any way?
Not in, not in that particular property.
Okay. Then I'll ask the commission, do you have an issue with Commissioner Wogan being? All right. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. With that, Isaac, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz and Commissioners. As Commissioner Wogan noted, the applicant for this one is Burley County, who is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from the current PUD planned unit development to the P public zoning district for lots one and three through 19 of block one, Missouri Valley Complex. As you can see on the screens before you, this project is located in east Bismarck between Main Avenue and Apple Creek Road, and also between east Bismarck Expressway and Midwest Drive. The county is requesting this zoning map amendment to permit similar but a slightly expanded range of institutional and recreational uses on the project area with a little bit of increased flexibility there. The, for example, the current PUD includes uses such as a sanitary lift station, the Burley Morton Detention Center, an off-road motorsports facility, livestock shows, things of that nature. And these uses are also permitted within the P public zoning district, as well as some other institutional and recreational uses that would not be explicitly stated in the current PUD. So therefore, if the county or some other entity comes to the county and wants to do something there that is not explicitly spelled out in the PUD, they would be able to do that potentially in the P, in the P public district without having to continue to amend the existing PUD, which has been amended a few different times in its lifetime. So the property is adjacent to some partially developed industrial uses to the south, a mix of industrial and residential uses to the east, utility and undeveloped land to the north across east Main Avenue, and some other institutional uses to the west across east Bismarck Expressway. And that section across from east Bismarck Expressway, as you can see, is also zoned P public there specifically. In the future land use plan, the area is identified as both institutional as well as parks and open space. Institutional areas are places of cultural, political, or administrative significance to the general public. And parks and open space areas are places which are kept in a largely natural state, therefore providing other important functions for the community and ecosystem. The public was duly notified of this request via publications in the Bismarck Tribune on March 14th and 21st, and 24 postcards were mailed to nearby owners of properties on March 14th as well. To the best of my knowledge, staff have not received any public comments regarding this request. There you can see the future land use plan on the screens before you. But to the best of my knowledge, staff have not received any public comments regarding this request. And as a cumulative result of all the findings in the staff reports before you, staff find that the proposed zoning map amendment would not adversely impact public health, safety, or general welfare, and that it is generally consistent with the Comprehensive Plan Bismarck Code of Ordinances and relevant state law. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the zoning map amendment from the PUD planned unit development to the P public zoning district for lots one and three through 19, block one, Missouri Valley Complex. Does the commission have any questions for me at this time?
Commissioners, questions for Isaac. Commissioner Shell?
Isaac, we typically assign quasi-ownership components to the P public zoning or have an interest from some public agency, whether it's the state or the city or county, township, schools, whatever it might be. Can you maybe describe, or to your knowledge, is the intent for Burley County to maintain ownership through this or to sell pieces of property off? Can you maybe just elaborate on that to your knowledge?
Commissioner Shell, Chair Schwartz, and Commissioners, so there are other owners currently there besides just Burley County. City of Bismarck owns one of the lots, and the state of North Dakota owns one of the lots. Of course, they are also public entities. I believe there's also representatives of the Burley County here tonight, so they could maybe answer that. I personally am not aware of any direct intentions to sell it to non-public entities, but I would let a member of Burley County or their representative speak to that specifically.
Okay. Commissioners, additional questions for Isaac? I'm not seeing or hearing any, Isaac. Thank you. With that, I'll open up the public hearing for this agenda item. And it looks like Landon is ready to step up to the podium once again.
Why not? Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just add a little bit to what Isaac had mentioned before. Yeah, the goal here is to take this out of that PUD zoning district and bring it into the P public zoning. The PUD, you know, it has some constraints on it that are maybe not necessary for all the groups that are going to be out there. That doesn't mean, of course, that the guardrails come off completely. Even with that P public use, there are still hurdles that they would need to get to through any kind of structures or paving or anything that needs to happen out of the site. It would have to get through the Missouri Valley Complex Committee, the Burley County Commission, and then, of course, the city of Bismarck has site plan review as well. So this is just a way of bringing under maybe a more appropriate zoning for the uses that will be out there. There are groups that want to be using space out there. There is no intent to sell them the land, though. They would be having use agreements with the county. But Commissioner Munson spoke to that a little bit, a little bit further. Right now, just going through the zoning change, we intend to bring in some plating later on, probably next month at some point, to maybe realign some of the right-of-way, realign maybe some where these use groups actually operate out of. I can answer any questions if you have them.
Okay. Commissioners, questions, additional questions for Landon? Landon, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And if you would put your name on the log and introduce yourself.
I can do that. Chair and Commissioners, I am Wayne Munson, Burley County Commissioner. I'm very excited that the Missouri Valley Complex Committee has made the steps that we're making to get this developed again to the, to the use of Burley County residents. So to answer Commissioner Shell's question, no. Our goal is to keep this all within Burley County, to then be able to assign land use agreements to each group that wants to participate out there. So this has been a culmination of a little over years' worth of work to get to this point. We have a lot of interest in the, in the complex, and it's pretty exciting to, I've been here since 2000. There hasn't been anything really going on out there. So this was one of the pieces that I wanted to champion when I was elected, to try to get this complex developed and get some people out there and in being able to enjoy our fairground. Any questions?
Commissioners, questions for Wayne? I'm not seeing or hearing any, Wayne.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the information. With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. And I'm not seeing or hearing any. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Excuse me. And Isaac, any final comments?
No additional comments, Chair. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Isaac. With that, Commissioners, this is a request for a zoning map amendment. Staff recommendation is to approve. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Zent. And we have a second from Commissioner Lukens. With that, any additional discussion? And I'm not hearing or seeing any. So Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Wogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we'll move on to item G on our regular agenda, which is Bowden addition, block one, lots one to 23 and 25 to 34. And it is a request for a future land use plan amendment, a zoning map amendment, I guess just those two items. And Daniel's going to provide us with staff briefing this evening.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz, planning commission. So Bowden Development LLC is requesting the zoning map amendment and future land use plan amendment within Bowden addition. This is in north Bismarck. It's on the east side of North Washington Street and on the south side of east LaSalle. And just to get your bearings, just south of Liberty Elementary School. So there is, as a set of school on the north side, single-family homes on most, most of the way around in the northeast, south and east. Across Washington, there's a long-term care medical facility, as well as vacant commercial sites on the other side of Washington. There are really three components of this request, so I think I'll just take each one individually, and then we'll put them together at the end. So the first one is the future land use plan amendment. This would be going from urban neighborhood to neighborhood mixed use. It's really just a little small area that would change. However, when staff reviewed this, the area that they were proposing to rezone is mostly shown in the urban neighborhood, but it really would be more appropriately shown in the neighborhood mixed use, as you can see on the map here. So it really just makes it more clear that the zoning would be supported by the future land use plan. The second change would be to rezone 10 lots that are currently in the center of Bowden Addition. These 10 lots are currently slated for two-family residential, so duplexes, twin homes. And these are on the east side of Oslo Lane, as I said, right in the center as you would enter into the Bowden Addition from the north, from east LaSalle. This, this would be changed to conditional RT to match what was on, what is on the west side of Oslo Lane. So it would be lumped into the office portion of Bowden Addition on the west. Thirdly, the conditions of the office portion of Bowden Addition, the conditional RT, would change in four ways. And so the maximum building footprint would be changed from 4,500 square feet of primary structure plus 1,000 square feet of attached garage to just 5,500 total, whether or not there is a garage. So the overall footprint will not increase. However, the building owners would have the option to have a garage or not, and that would be, give them that flexibility. Secondly, the size of signs would change from 60 square feet total on the lot to 45 square feet per sign. And only two signs would be allowed for those lots that are adjacent to both an interior right-of-way roadway and a public right-of-way. They would have the option of two signs, each 45 square feet. Third, the, a commercial parking lot would be allowed for users of the Bowden Addition office area. So it would be essentially a shared parking arrangement. I think over time, they've found there would be a benefit to having that for use of their, of their owners. It would be mutually maintained and shared somewhere within that conditional RT district. Fourth, a landscape buffer would be required on the east side of that conditional RT. That previously was not required by ordinance because it was divided by a, by a roadway, and our buffer requirements don't cross roadways. However, now that it would not have a roadway crossing it, there would need to be a buffer along the east side of that red area that you see on the map, those lots within the center of Bowden Addition. That, that landscape buffer would be installed as it develops. So as each site is developed, that owner would, would submit a landscape plan with their site plan and install landscaping at that time. So those are the changes to the actual written part of the ordinance. You know, there has been some discussion about a childcare facility in here, and that is a potential option for the landowner. However, this ordinance does not mention that because that is allowed already in the R 10 district by a special use permit and would continue to be allowed within the conditional RT district with a special use permit. So it's not mentioned in the ordinance at all, but that is a part of a discussion that's out there in the public, and I think the owner is considering that. So I did receive one comment, and you all forwarded that this morning from a property owner nearby in opposition to this, this request. And so I had a phone call with that same person earlier today, but I have not received any other, any other comments. And so based on the findings contained in your staff report and the comprehensive plan, and ultimately the health, safety, and welfare of the public, staff do recommend approval of this zoning map amendment from the R 10 residential to conditional RT residential zoning districts on lots 25 through 34, block one of Bowden Addition, and then revisions to the conditions of the entire conditional RT residential district, including lots one through 23, block one of Bowden Addition, as outlined in the attached ordinance in your staff report. And finally, an amendment to the portion of the area in the future land use plan noted above, from urban neighborhood to neighborhood mixed use. Do you have any questions for me?
Commissioners, questions for Daniel? Commissioner Shell?
Daniel, you may have mentioned this, maybe I just didn't register with me, but the existing 10 houses or 10 parcels of R 10 that would be converted to the conditional RT, will there have to be lot combinations then, I'm presuming, of those 10 units so that you can make one building and a parking lot, three buildings and one parking lot? Maybe, what's the net difference? And maybe if you don't have that answer, perhaps the applicant can answer that question.
Sure. So I can answer that. There will have to be lot combinations. You know, this is not a replat today that you have before you. So those lots are certainly sized for, for twin homes, and so they would be combined. There have been lot combinations already in Bowden Addition, and I believe they do plan to continue doing that. I should say that even if lots are combined, they still are held to that footprint maximum. Even if it's a larger lot, it can't go more than 5,500 square feet of floor area. But they, they do have the option in our ordinance currently to combine lots, and they could reflect more on maybe their plans for that, but they would have to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, additional questions for Daniel?
Daniel?
Could you clarify what the buffer requirements are for the buffer that would separate the properties?
Sure. So the, I actually don't have that on hand. I might have to look that up, the exact number of the, of the.
I'm just curious, yeah, what, if it's, I'm assuming it's not a berm, but it must be trees and?
No, it's not a berm. So the berm is not required if you're doing industrial and residential. So how about this? When I, when I sit down, I will look it up, and I will tell you.
We'll, we'll come for final comments.
Thank you.
All right. Other than, I guess there are no additional questions for you.
Okay, thank you.
With that, this is a call for a public hearing. And I'll open up the public hearing. And these are either the requestor or a representative. Cam, if you'd put your name on the log there, that would be great.
Good evening, Chairman Commissioners, Cam Knudsen, developer with, with the project. I know you have a long agenda, so I will probably rapid-fire through a few slides, but I think it was fourth grade doing the exercise of what kind of learner you are, and it was definitely a 10 out of 10 on visual, and that's still the case today. So if I can get these pulled up. I'll take you back a little bit. It's been a couple of years since we brought Bowden forward for final approval, but ultimately the, the focus of this project was coming up with a solution for small business owners that want to make that leap into owning their own custom-designed building and just seeing a shortfall in the market for, if you're of that smaller scale, there wasn't a whole lot of options out there for building new. And especially if you were, you know, looking for land options, a lot of those were much bigger than what you're looking at. And then just having to do the whole thing from scratch was a pretty, pretty difficult process. This is a shot of the site back in 2009, and so you've got a mile on Washington, 57th to the north, one mile, mile on State Street, and then 43rd on the south. And so it was interesting to look at this and see the progression over 10-plus-year period, and just very, very little, that red box is what was showing, single-family housing that was added along, basically eight miles total. You've got some medium density on the far north side there on 57th, but we saw that progression play out south of here as well and other areas of town where being along a major arterial roadway is not usually very conducive for, for adding single-family housing. This goes back to 2020. This goes back to 2020. We would have first started working on our initial concept for the site, and so this was a full build out of offices following a meeting with the neighborhood. We ended up pulling this concept back, modified what's basically version 2.0 of Bowden, worked through the process with the park district, and the park district ultimately turned it back to the neighborhood to vote on whether they wanted this park option or a different option that was already approved previously. The neighborhood ended up voting down this concept, and so on our end, it was going back to the drawing board. Do we bring back version 1.0, or do we tweak this concept again? And so now, leading into 2022, we brought the concept that was ultimately approved, and it was, for us, a vote of confidence from planning its owning to get a unanimous vote of approval for the version that we ended up proceeding with and developing. I do want to walk you back a little bit on, again, going back to us working on this internally back in 2020, the different versions that came together, but it's been a pretty wild couple of years in the construction and real estate world. So if you go back to 2021, mortgage rates were at historic lows. January 2021, the average was 2.65%. You had inflation below 2%. That would be nice to get back to that. We get to 2022, and the start of the year, rates were still fairly low, but then by the end of '22, you know, after this was approved, after we were working on the site, rates jump up to over 7%. And then inflation peaked over 9% around the middle of 2022. And so, you know, a lot of changes that were hitting that year. There also was a new International Building Code that was adopted, and so that was interesting with us in the middle of designing the first couple of buildings, just seeing how that impacted and what changes we had to make ultimately with that new code adoption. And then 2023, finally get the site finished, get ready to start rolling on construction, but we also saw in our market locally, a pretty shocking stat of single-family permits were down over 50% in 2023 versus the average of the previous three years. So that, for our stable market, is not something that we see very often. So more critical than ever on our work, I mean, just striving for, how do we strive for efficiencies? How do we get creative? Because a lot has changed since then, but good to persevere through some of those tougher times. This was our ribbon-cutting event, partners with Epic Homes. We've got Tom and Parker here, so if there's any building-related questions, we'll want to defer to those guys. But, you know, great getting the concept finished, really proud of how this thing has turned out. I think if you go back to renderings we were showing of the concept, what it looks like today, it is great hearing from people in the community that have really enjoyed the Scandinavian design and theme that we followed through with. So just flowing through a few of the images from a couple of these first buildings. And then here you got the planning team on the far south sides. That was one of those examples that they did combine two lots to build. That's, I'll cover a few images in a bit on the landscape buffer we did on the back of their building. We've also got Jones Physical Therapy that's getting built right now. And again, one of the joys of this is just working with the business owners, their stories, their team, and just the thought of what it's going to be like for them to, you know, in this case, Jones PT, to move into this building. You've got Lighthouse Commodities, that's also getting built right now. And then Sean, I couldn't find your image, but I should have reached out to you earlier and thrown you up there. But another one, that's pending here to start pretty soon with Armor Interactive. And then we should be breaking ground on the first residential, single-family home here within a couple of months. So a few things I do want to acknowledge on that evolution of what we've seen happen here is we are seeing larger buildings than we initially expected, but ultimately, fewer total buildings with more of the lot combinations. So in going through a few of those stats, right now, we're seeing, for average, finished space per lot equivalent, 3,700, footprint just under 3,200. Right now, looking at a few of the smaller lots that we have, that we anticipate will probably end up turning into a lot combination, we anticipate now that we'll most likely have 16 builds total, and then we're proposing adding two more if we do the change of those twin home lots. So in the end, we would predict that we'll have about 70,000 square feet of total finished square footage of these builds, footprint of about 57,000. And then, just speaking a little bit more to that reality of, you know, kind of what we're seeing in the market now, and just that economy's a scale with costs being up higher, new code, professional firms you're working with, it's a lot harder than we were hoping initially to get a 2,000-square-foot building. I mean, we could certainly build a 2,000-square-foot building. I hope that we do end up having some that are closer to that size. But again, the realities of the market with some groups that we're talking to now, we're just, we're upfront with them that it's going to be really difficult to get that to appraise because that ultimate, that square, price per square foot on a, say, a 2,000-square-foot building versus four or five, it's hard to not have that number shoot beyond what an appraisal would come back at, especially with the fact that there's not similar comps like this really in the market. So just wanted to be upfront about kind of what we're seeing on a few things evolving from what we initially anticipated. As Daniel had covered, we're not proposing a change of the maximum footprint. We don't have any right now that are at this level. We're not talking to anybody right now in design phase that also is getting close to this level, but it will help to remove the kind of quirkiness of max square foot here plus garage. And so as we're doing designs and working with other professional firms, that language of the garage gets a bit confusing, and so just getting the clarity there is going to be helpful. It's also worth noting that with any of these builds, we do have to meet the same parking requirements you have to meet anywhere in town. And then from the get-go, we've had a heightened landscape requirement on these builds, so that would still remain. So no matter what you do, if you're doing a build, based on whatever lot you have, you have to have enough parking to follow the standard parking outlined by the city of Bismarck. The building signage item, I consider this one a little more clerical as we're working through. Again, this is a unique concept. There's a lot on there, and this is one that, the buildings that are either along Washington or LaSalle that can have two signs, the way that language was written initially seemed like it'd be more like 60 square feet per sign, but it ended up being a total count of that. So the 45 square foot now would say, if you're on a building like these two facing a major right-of-way, a public right-of-way, you can have two signs up to that amount. And so you'll see with these, that image on the bottom right, you know, scale-wise, certainly nothing kind of over the top on sizing, but just helps on our end to avoid running into that by a couple of square feet. This image here, looking at existing, proposed, what Daniel showed, I added into there was the landscape buffer that would get added along the eastern boundary of those, what's currently the R-10 lots. And then looking at these twin homes, so this is one of those items, again, that we, as we got into this and started moving, the intent was certainly to follow through with doing this as we had initially planned, but the reality that it's pretty dense to get those 10 units added to that area. And so as we're working with other business owners, and we've got a few that are in place there now, it's unanimous across the board with everyone that we're working with that they would rather not see these go in there and just have it, you know, built in with the 10-fold units. We did look at a scenario of, could we reduce that? But having infrastructure underground already made it, would make it very challenging, almost impossible, to redo those lines at this stage. Taking a look at the density comparison, so if we add 10 units, we would estimate that we'd have about 20,000 square feet finished, 7,500 square feet of garage total. So gross square footage would be about 27,500, give or take. So again, quite a bit of density on that that we're actually looking to reduce. And then on the commercial side, what we're proposing here would be that shared parking in the middle area, and then two buildings, one on the south and one to the north. That buffer, again, shown on the eastern side, and then we'd have landscaping on that parking lot as well. Here's a shot of planning teams. This is the drone images I'm going to show, were taken last week, it's not usually the most beautiful time of year when it's coming off of winter and things are still pretty brown. But with that buffer, that thing was supercharged on the plantings and what we did behind that building, and so that just got wrapped up this fall. We did drip irrigation for all of it, so that should really start to thrive and take off here in the coming years. I was actually looking at maps earlier today, and the very large evergreens on the left side of the image, that looked awesome. It looked like on Google Earth, those were planted around 2017. And so if you can look over to behind the planning team's office and see the buffer ship that's in place there, you know, in less than a decade, you're going to have some very, very large trees growing in that buffer. And then the buffer you would have with this change is about 530 feet. That would go along the back of what's currently the R-10 lots. Just a few different angles to get a little more, you know, perception of the site. And again, one more angle. I showed on L-24, we went back and forth, you know, does it make sense to add L-24? We ultimately did not include that onto here, but it was interesting getting these drone images just this last week. Again, it's not something we're asking tonight. We're fine not doing that unless there was feedback from the neighborhood. If there was an interest in that, then that buffer would then run along L-24 as well. So again, not part of the request tonight, just the twin homes there. We would proceed with doing that as a single family, but if there was interest in feedback from the neighborhood, you know, we'd certainly consider adding L-24 the same way we're doing the twin home lots currently. So that is the end of my comments. If there's any questions that I can answer, or the builder team, or of course, we have Swenson Hagan tonight that would be happy to come back up. Landen will be here all night.
Commissioners, questions for Cam? Commissioner Shell?
Cam, you answered my question that I had earlier on the, how many of these lots get combined? Sounds like you'd have two buildings and a parking lot if this is proposed, so thank you for that answer, or if this is approved, excuse me. My last question is probably more on just the statement you said earlier where you're looking to start construction on some of the single-family homes this year, or one or whatever that might be. Do you envision maintaining that R-5 buffer, the buffer of the, I think it would be the R-10 buffer of those homes staying as homes? Or would we anticipate this creeping into what really was a version one of Bowden, of this entire thing being a commercial, you know, office park? Can you maybe speak to your desire for that at this point in time?
Yeah. Chair and Commissioner, just to make sure I'm tracking this correctly, question is, are we committed to keeping the single-family as single-family?
It's single-family, but it's still zoned R-10. So yet, the R-10 that is not up for debate tonight, that is just along Helsinki Lane, is that intended to remain that in the future? Or is there intention to come back with a zoning request in the future to change that also to a conditional RT and put more of this as the commercial office park?
Yeah, to be completely direct, no, we will not be coming back to change the single-family lots. And I know it can maybe look that way with changing these twin homes in the middle, but I'm excited we'll get our first single-family build off the ground. I should have clarified earlier that the partnership with Epic Homes is commercial-only, and we were going down an avenue of a separate building partnership on the single-family lots. And again, with the market conditions, the way it is, a single-family, that area the last couple of years has been, you know, a really tough couple of years. But at this stage now, we were late in the game on ramping up marketing the single-family lots, so we really just got that going the last year and have the one builder doing a specum at this stage. We're talking to a private individual that's looking at buying to build a home, but we are committed to doing the single-family lots. The reason we had those as R-10 is, and I've talked about this a lot in discussions with the city, is we're seeing a major trend now of people that are looking to downsize their house and do a slab-on-grade patio home, still trying to get that three-stall garage. And so when you have the garage in the house, it's really easy to get past the 30% lot coverage ratio that exists with R-5, single-family housing. So it's R-10 in this case, you've got a higher lot coverage ratio of 40%, and that's why we did that from the get-go with the plan that was approved a couple of years ago, and that would stay now today. So I think there's 15 single-family lots total here, I believe, so we are committed to proceeding with that. There is not going to be a return later to change that. The only one that we talked about that we kind of went back and forth on was that lot number 24, and does that make sense to include and have a clear line? And again, we ultimately held off on bringing that forward as part of this and just focused on the twin homes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shell. Commissioners, additional questions? Commissioner Zent?
Cam, I've driven by a lot up there, and I've had questions and don't know, but what's the history or the background behind the name Bowden?
Yeah. Good to get asked that question because I was in a discussion the other day, and someone's like, so was that your grandfather? Or was that, you know, like, and I'm like, no. So he said there was a discussion going on, a debate on that. So I'm like, oh, that's kind of funny to hear. There's debate of, you know, what grandfather this was of mine. But no, it was from years ago. There was a, when I was working out of town for a development company, we were doing a Scandinavian project, and we submitted names for the project. I submitted Bowden, it's Scandinavian for shelter. I liked the name, and it wasn't selected, and so I always had in the back of my head wanting to do a project like that. And as we're doing things like Elk Ridge or developments out at Hawk Tree, to come in with a theme would be really difficult for a larger-scale project. And so I think this project, being of the scale it was, we've had a ton of fun, just, hey, we're going to stick with the Scandinavian design. And so you're seeing that with every single build thus far, hoping that continues into the residential side as well. That rendering was a good example of also following that theme, but ultimately, that's the backstory. I've got roots, I'm sure, like, a lot of the people from the community that have heritage of family that came over from Scandinavian countries, and so it's kind of paying homage to that, and also a design that's clean, minimalistic, lots of natural light, and we've been having fun on the design front, bringing that forward.
Thank you. Now I can answer that question when it comes up again.
Yeah, yeah, not a family member.
Thank you, Commissioners Zent. Commissioners, additional questions?
I have a question for you, Cam.
Yeah.
You know, when you've appeared before us before, when the neighborhood has come out and spoken, there's always been a concern about traffic. And you've had your offices there for how many years now?
Oh, half a year.
Half a year? Okay. So, but I guess in the time that you've been there with the development that's been done, has there been an increase in traffic that you've noted?
I have not. I mean, I was thinking about that over the last week and have been trying to pay attention. I mean, school and school starting and three o'clock school pickup, you know, you get the cars that are coming through there for the school hour, so that's where you'll see a little uptick just at the school site and the surrounding area. But admittedly, like, from my perception, thus far, I'm not seeing anything out of the ordinary of what I would see elsewhere in town or around any other school site. So I've been happy with how traffic has flowed. There's never a time I've been stuck in a traffic jam or couldn't pull out of Bowden after like five seconds. So, you know, there'll be more coming as a few more builds occur, but I still, traffic, I'm, at this stage, I'm not concerned about how things will evolve. That's definitely not a fear of mine.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I think without any additional questions, thank you.
Perfect, thanks.
With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. Thank you, sir. If you'd put your name on the log and introduce yourself, that would be great.
Okay, mayors, commissioners, my name is Jack Knudsen. I'm going to start with backing up a little bit to the history of Boulder Ridge and then get to confronting this issue, okay? Because I think they're dependent, interdependent on one another. I guess it's just shy of 25 years ago that we started designing Boulder Ridge. Somebody that worked with Landen over here, Dave Patience with Swenson Hagan, was a prominent land planner for many years. for many years. So him and I actually evolved the master plan for that development. And the single-family went certainly as far as the school. It went at least north of the Bowden property. So anyway, it was all designed for single-family. And a few things I just want to mention about that development is that, to my knowledge, it was the first single-family subdivision in the city to have an HOA. And we kept our fee very nominal, but it paid for maintenance on the entrance that we did. It was kind of a unique flavor and a lot of tree plantings and a berm along Washington. Huge berm so that when you're going down Washington, and even in those days, we knew the elevation of what Washington would be. So we made them quite high because that was before the new highway, New Washington Street. So you don't hardly see into the backyards of those houses. So we had a lot of deliberation about certain things. Let's see, what else? We put down some covenances that weren't real common at that time. We had a covenant where you could not leave an RV or a boat or something alongside of the house or the garage over the winter months. They could only be there from like April 15th to October 15th or something. And we had another restriction, no storage sheds. And that partially what came about because there were a lot of walkout lots in Boulder Ridge. And when you're sitting up high looking down, you don't, they're unsightly, and they're hard to manage because people will do the darnedest things with them, I've seen over time. And so we had, gosh, I should have brought notes. We had the new storage shed, we had that. There was one other, oh, well, anyway, I'll just, I won't belabor that part of it because I can't remember what one of the last covenances was. But we lost some sales because of that. Not a lot, but we lost a few. But we didn't change anything. We kept true to the standards that we had when we started. And we figured, oh, we had size restrictions, was of course another obvious one. We had color of the building that if it was too loud, if it was red, didn't work. Okay? And every plan, and there's close to 550 of them, I personally had to go through and approve by an architectural review committee. And the bottom, who said it Truman, Buck stops here, I was the head of that review committee. And the majority pretty well went easy. But we had some that I would have to confront them, that we have to alter it because it's not fitting with what we want. So the point simply is, I babysat that project for 23 years. I conceived it, I babysat it, okay? There's nobody in this community that is intimately familiar with that development as I am. What you see there is not hypothetical. It's not what might happen. And where I'm going with this is that when that Bowden addition was approved several years ago, I can guarantee you as you're sitting there, people, it didn't mean it was right. That's one of the bigger black marks in Bismarck, as far as I'm concerned, for inappropriate zoning. There was all kinds of sites where they could have went. Because that, to change it from single-family, there are people that were calling me, they were gravely concerned. Hardworking people bought their dream house there. And now they're going to look at office buildings in their backyard? It's like, I'd like to use some strong language on here, but I think I'm on TV, so better not. But it was nonsense that they could have went across the street where there was a lot of commercial. It was not in harmony. Part of zoning change should be in harmony with the existing neighborhood. Plus, and anyway, it got railroaded through. So it is. We won't go on about that. So now we'll address this immediate situation. There's two big concerns to me, and I think as well to a lot of the homeowners. Initially, I heard that he was, Cam was looking at putting in one bigger building, like a daycare center. Now apparently he's looking at two and a big parking lot in between. Regardless, once again, it backs up to single-family houses. That's unheard of, to have a commercial, even if it's RT zoning, there's no good way to buffer that for 15 years, people. So he doesn't know it, but he's shooting himself in the foot to even put something like that in there because that's going to devalue those single-family homes. Okay? This is 50 years' experience speaking, by the way, between building and land development. So they don't want a parking lot. Did you comment, Cam, the square footage of that parking lot? How big was it to be?
Jack, keep addressing us if you would, please.
Okay, well, at any rate, it's a big slab of concrete. It's probably 2/3 of a football field or something between those two buildings. Do you think houses want to back up to that? And then when there was talk of daycare that could easily have 40 to 50 students, there's a 24-foot street there throughout the whole development, 24-foot street. Not a public street, it's a private street, far substandard to our public streets. You don't put a daycare center in on a 24-foot street. It won't work unless they have enormous room to go into a parking lot and turn around, create a traffic mess. Because 24 feet allows two-way traffic, no curb parking. So every school in town, they tend to park along a curb a lot. They can't come and go then. So it's absurd from just that aspect. Now add to that that it's coming out, the entrance to that area is straight across from the entrance to Liberty School, directly across. And I might just suggest, Mayor, without meaning to pick on you, but you asked Cam about the traffic of the school. Ask Bowden Development people that live there. Don't ask a biased developer. Do you think he's going to tell you it's nothing? I'm going to tell you I've heard it's pretty intense already. Now add what could be well over 50 cars coming and going, and in the morning especially, it's at the same time as a school starts. So it dictates a whole lot more traffic than the twin homes that were to be there. So to summarize, I guess, to conclude, I'd like to simply say that the homeowners, I've listened to them for several years now, they've had a lot of aggravation, a lot of frustration, a lot of disappointment about this whole thing. And if you allow a zoning, another zoning change, what's already happened is way more than it ever should have been. And there better not be another change. It stays whatever it is, R10. Okay, any questions, comments?
Commissioners, questions for Jack? Jack, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Do you, are you part of the HOA? Are you a sitting member on it?
I am, yes.
Okay. And so you're representing the...
Yes, I'm speaking, I'm echoing what I've been hearing for several years.
Okay.
Yes, very much so.
Okay.
And, of course, because it's in, here's another interesting, almost contradiction. Cam suggested their developments are trying to give themes to. We had a theme 23 years ago, or whatever it was, on Boulder Ridge. Our signs, imagine this, folks, our signs said Boulder Ridge is special, a unique and special housing environment. Okay? That was our logo. And that's what those people expected. Something very wrong in Rome that that got changed. So if I'm a little intense, there's reasons. So we had a theme too, and it got took away from us. In the middle, Infill, in one of the finer single-family neighborhoods in Bismarck. And by the way, I also did Eagle Crest. These are two developments that we made no compromises on, and they'll withstand the test of time and make this community look good. And then to allow this to happen, it better stop. Okay, anything else?
Okay. Commissioners, any additional questions for Jack? Not seeing any. Jack, thanks for your comments.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for listening. And I apologize for being a little emotional, but this has been a traumatic deal.
With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Roger Harris. I'm actually the Vice President of the HOA for Boulder Ridge. And I'd have to agree, actually, with Jack here. It's kind of been a smack in the face when you guys approved that. Because we were sold pretty much a dream of housing. And then a couple of years ago, you guys just approved it. I mean, I get it, you probably are going for, you know, money, I mean, and sense. And I just think of my daughter's, like, future and everything. Because that's why my wife and I bought this property. We bought it in 2019 with the vision of that. And the problem is that it was going to be single-family homes. And then it just gets changed. And a lot of us opposed it a couple of years ago, but it just got approved. And here we are again. And I'm up here again. So I'm not good at these public speaking things, so I apologize. But it's, and a lot of members I've talked to, especially as the Vice President, they don't want this. They don't want, especially a daycare. I'd love to know who's wanting that and why they're changing that. We didn't want businesses on there, and it got changed. But with that, I'd just, I'd just like to, I guess if you have any questions for me?
Okay. Commissioners, questions for Roger? Roger, how close do you live to the development?
I live on LaSalle. So I live probably about 15 houses from Liberty, Liberty Elementary. Yep, a lot of our members live around there. And traffic has definitely gone up a little bit. But again, I mean, when you're asking somebody who's going to build it, so just coming, it comes off a little bit. And I live at, I mean, I live on LaSalle quite a bit. So traffic's, it's like NASCAR sometimes. It would be nice to see a study of somebody actually did see, you know, their improvements rather than, you know, just business versus homeowners, so.
Okay, thank you.
But thank you.
With that, the podium is open for others.
Would it be possible to get that map up that you had up when you were up here? Hi, my name is Dawn Olmer, and I live on the first edition of Boulder Ridge. So Boulder Ridge Road is actually where I live. And I'll write my name. So as soon as he puts the map up, I, oh, there we go. So if you look at that map and you see Boulder Ridge Road, I'm in the corner house that looks out over the Bowden Development. And when I stand on my deck now, I see business signs and lights and roads and construction and cars. So just to give you an idea, there's several people that live on that road that just said they didn't feel like coming because they didn't feel like their voices mattered anymore since it got pushed through the first time. So before I start, there's a few things that I would like to ask if at all possible. Is there a way to table this until you do a traffic study? We have LaSalle that is open traffic right now. We have families that bought homes for their children to be close to a school. And right now, there's no stop signs on LaSalle. It's a through traffic. And most of the people that I've talked to on that street have already said they wish they wouldn't have bought there. They bought there for a reason because they thought it was going to be a residential, nice place to live. And now that's going up. And if you can do a traffic study by the school, if you, I leave my house at 5:45 in the morning, so I don't have to deal with traffic. But if you leave anywhere between 7:00 and 9:00, getting out on Washington Street is a nightmare. And that's not a joke. You can ask anybody that's in that neighborhood. So I'm just requesting if you could please do a traffic study. Has anything like that been done? Just to see how much traffic there really is. Because it is a problem. And if you see the people lining up to drop off their kids and pick up their kids, it's a problem there already. I'd also like to know if it's a possibility to do a groundwater study in Boulder Ridge in several places. We asked for that before the Bowden Development went in because we knew we were going to be losing a lot of the ground, you know, the green space, and nothing to soak up the ground. So we were really hoping we could get a water study before anything else happens on this, or before you make a decision. There's a lot of things to consider. As I mentioned, when this first went into play, one of Cam's selling points was the small lots, that there would never be parking lots, there wouldn't be a lot of traffic. It would look like we were just living beside homes. And when you see the, where those of us who live right beside it, if you could just come and see where our houses are, right now, we no longer have a residential area behind us. And you can put 13 homes behind us, but 13 homes and then commercial buildings and signs and businesses isn't a residential area. There's something to consider when we talk about changing zoning. And I know you all know more than I do about this. And you took this job so that you could, you could work for Bismarck and to make the city great again. Anyway, sorry about that. We could all wear hats and everything. But anyway, but the purpose of your job is to protect the residents as well. When this first came up, there's been, I think this is my fourth or fifth time coming here on these meetings. And the first one that came up, the mayor at that time spoke up and he said, we have to protect residential zoning. And I appreciated that so much. What a truth. We have to protect residential zoning. You have Liberty School, and then right across from Liberty School, it was zoned for family homes. Now, doesn't it make sense that family homes would want to live across from a school? And just think how quickly those homes would have sold. And so that residential zoning, if it had been protected, we would have had homes in that area with kids that could run across the street and go to school. And now we're back here arguing again and wanting to put more commercial property in an area that was meant to be residential. As mentioned by Jack, and I really do appreciate Jack talking, I didn't know that he was going to be able to be here tonight, across the street, there's plenty of commercial property. It's open, it's for sale, it's been there. And it's zoned commercial, but it's empty right now. But we're putting commercial property in between an elementary school and family homes. Now, when you think about that, as a person living in a home like that, what would you want to look out your back deck at? There's no way I can avoid seeing tall businesses and business signs and business lights instead of the residential area that I was promised. When we purchased our home, we studied it. My husband is very good at that. He studied the whole plan for the area. We looked at the watershed area behind our house, and we found out what was going to be put there. And never was there a mention of anything other than homes. And so we purchased a home, and we planned for that to be the last home we purchased here in Bismarck, to stay there. And now that plan has completely changed. So my request, again, is don't just let this get pushed through. We know it happened the last time. And there were a lot more people who spoke... a lot more people who spoke up, because they thought maybe it would make a difference. I had a thirty-minute presentation last time with pictures and everything, because I thought it would make a difference. So I'm just really requesting, please, don't just push this through. Take a minute and look it over. Come and drive by our houses. I'll let you come in my house. You can stand on my deck. And just imagine what you would want as a Bismarck resident, looking off of that backyard. What do you want in your backyard? Are there any of you who would say, I would love a parking lot? I would love businesses? I love lots of noise, and lots of moving around, and lots of construction? Are there any of you that think that that's why people buy into a premium neighborhood? And the funniest part about this is, is we were the first edition of Boulder Ridge. So we were Boulder Ridge Road. Literally, the name of the whole, you know, residential area was Boulder Ridge. And instead of having the prime site, we now are the ones looking at the commercial sites, which could have just as easily been put across the street. So I hope that that gives just a little bit of perspective. Cam does a beautiful job. His work is, I mean, he shows you pictures. It's beautiful in a commercial area. But even when they speak about putting those thirteen homes, which one will be behind my house, which would be, that's wonderful. If you're going to build patio homes, there's a certain type of resident that wants a patio home, and generally, it's more on the retired side. Do they want to be beside a commercial building, a daycare with kids playing and noise? Is that, is that really what's going to work best in that area? I know, I know it sounds like we're just being, we're not anti-anything. And this is, I'm speaking for me and for several others in my community, that just didn't feel like being here would be worth it. And I know that all of you put a lot of thought into the decisions you make. And so when you make this decision, I hope you will remember that it's showing our residents, our taxpayers, if their voices matter. Because it shouldn't be left up to the developer to decide that they can fraudulently claim one thing when you're purchasing your home, and then they know that the city will just rezonate if they need to. If this is going to happen on a large scale, there needs to be a provision that tells developers, or that tells community members, it can change at any time. Because what are we supposed to trust? How do we trust the system? If we know, as soon as the developer makes all the money they can make on our development, it can be changed into something different, which I believe will lower the prices on our homes. Because it's not the same type of person who's going to come in and buy a home beside commercial property, that would have, if it had remained the wonderful development it started out as. I love our neighborhood, and I love our neighbors. And we had, when this got pushed through, we, none of us were happy about it. But we accepted it, and we thought, okay, it's looking nice. There's a road. There, you know, those things look nice. I wish I didn't have to look at businesses, but let's just leave it as it is. I'm happy there's residential. But then to come in and put two big commercial buildings and parking lots, without ever studying the traffic, without ever studying the groundwater, when the water started melting, we did have backups, you know, that were happening in Boulder Ridge. We know that groundwater could be a problem. Can we please study those two things before thinking on this anymore? And can we please just think of the residents? Once again, there's an elementary school. Family homes should have been on Bowden, where Bowden is right now. It's a beautiful property, would have been beautiful homes. And Cam has a beautiful setup for all of his businesses, which would have been great in a commercial area. So I'm just asking if you can just consider that. I'd really appreciate it. And I know the man that came up earlier and was talking about the rezoning, I appreciated your comment, that why would you rezone before there was a purchase made? That's the kind of thinking that has to happen, is why is this rezoning happening? And who does it affect, other than the developer? And I'm not saying anything bad about the developer, other than they can make their money, but why does it have to be at the residence's expense, who looked at a plan before they bought their home, and the plan said, you're going to have another beautiful area full of residential neighborhoods right behind you? So I would just ask you that. I just have to make sure that I didn't miss anything. Oh, yeah, there's, there's other things to be taken care of before we go into this. I mean, there's still no park. And when they brought up the park plan before, there were thirty-six businesses and a park. And that was the reason that the Boulder Ridge neighborhood voted that down, was because they didn't want thirty-six businesses. It wasn't because they didn't want the park, but we were told, if you get the park, you have to take the businesses. So I really hope that this somehow has had an effect on how you look at this. And I'm really asking that you will just take some time, do a traffic study, a groundwater study, do some of those things to make sure that the residents at Boulder Ridge are not put in jeopardy. I would really appreciate that, and I know they would too.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Dawn. Commissioners, any questions for Dawn before she sits back down? Commissioner Shell?
Maybe not necessarily a question, but I just wanted to address a couple of those things in terms of the studies. I know you had one question on what have we studied already? So from the City of Bismarck's perspective, we have done studies on Liberty Schools, as well as every other public elementary school in our community, on how do pedestrians walk there? How does the vehicles load and unload? And with those studies, make recommendations to improve site circulation. And so we do study those things, specifically on the school site. I could speak to when this first Bowden addition was proposed, we looked at the traffic volumes that would be generated by something like this, when compared to something of single-family or twin-home density that would have been as the alternative. And if I recall correctly, the traffic generation for either of those options were something similar. A single-family home also generates a fair amount of traffic when compared to a physical therapy business, or six, single-family homes compared to one, you know, law office, or whatever that trade-off would be. So it is something that, when we looked at it, we didn't find the change, or the proposed change at the time, to be significant enough to require a full-on, you know, more in-depth study, based on the limited types of businesses that would be located within Bowden. There's not going to be a gas station. There's not going to be a fast-food restaurant that would generate significantly more traffic in and out of the site. So we did enough analysis to know that we didn't want to do a further study. But I just want to let you know that is something that we've addressed, and would take into consideration with this proposal, as well as any other proposal that comes to town, specifically to the groundwater issue that you'd stated. When this came through, we looked at stormwater. We'll look at stormwater with any subdivision that comes in. We don't have a groundwater study in this area, or really any other area of what the interaction of that subservice water is doing. But we do have a good handle on what happens when it rains. That's kind of what we look at from that, the stormwater studies. The caveat with all of this is when you get to a spring melt, a lot of those pipes might be frozen, and so there might be a temporary, you know, flooding occurring on a street, or something like that. It's because the inlet's plugged, because it's full of ice or snow. So we don't have an occasion or an analysis for every situation that happens. And especially during the spring thaw, it's kind of a, tough to track down exactly where those problems are, because an hour later, it might melt its way through and disappear. But I just want to address those pieces. And then the last thing that you mentioned, or one of the last things that you mentioned, was that things can change at any time, or something along those lines. The zoning of a property can change, and it's not that, I guess that's how all of this Hall of City of Bismarck has been created, is through those changes. I would say that we have those changes, but we go through this process before that change or that decision's made, so that we can, I guess, understand if that's in the public's best interest to make that change. So I do want to note that even your home could change someday to not be a single-family home, but we would go through a process similar to this one, to discuss the merits of that. So I don't want anyone to believe that the status quo is what it's always going to be, when we obviously have to change to keep up.
So you said when the people's best interest. So you felt that the best interest for the people was the Bowden Development, when the zoning changed originally, is my question?
I would say, in generality, that's what we take into consideration in all of this, that we wouldn't do any of this if it wasn't in the public's interest. That is the public. That doesn't necessarily just mean the person across the street. That doesn't mean the guy who owns the house. That doesn't mean those particular people. They're all part of the public, but really, we're talking about the seventy-five thousand people within Bismarck, as well as the others within the ETA.
And you believe rezoning a residential community was in the best interest of the people of Bismarck, rather than having them built on a commercial property that was already zoned commercial and empty?
I guess I would state that, in these instances, we will take into consideration all of the parties involved. And so if--
And across from a school was the best place for that, rather than single-family homes. And that was the best for our community, and for Bismarck, and for the school? That was best for all of those?
What I would say, once again, I'll just reiterate, I'm not going to answer your question directly.
Okay. I'm just curious. I wasn't being, I'm not being snarky. I was just curious if that's the process you went through, is you believed that was the best for the public interest?
For the public interest, all of those pieces I would take into consideration, and try to make the best decision we can. It might not be what any of the applicant wants, or it might not be what the adjacent landowner wants. We try to find, all of those positions, and try to find the best situation that we can.
And then with the groundwater, we have a couple of engineers, I've had a couple engineers in our neighborhood who have offered to do a groundwater study, if it could be done. Because they, for one of them, has water problems, and they said it's really important to do a groundwater study, because they've noticed changes. The more cement that's added, there's been changes for them. So I know that that is something that could be beneficial. And as far as the traffic study that you did, are you saying you studied traffic coming out of Boulder Ridge onto Washington, and coming out of the school onto LaSalle, and the LaSalle Street itself? Have there been traffic studies done on those roads?
I would say that traffic studies that the city has performed over the course of time, when we've built Forty-third Avenue, recently reconstructed, we looked at the interaction between Boulder Ridge Road and Forty-third Avenue. When we built North Washington Street, we've done analysis, multiple analysis at LaSalle and Washington Street. So specifically, yes, but not as it relates to Bowden additions' impact on those. But overall, we've done studies in all of those locations.
And you said you took consideration, into consideration, the size of the buildings that Cam was talking about, and the size, and that there would be less traffic. But now, can you agree with me that if we're putting bigger buildings in, and bigger parking lots, obviously, that's to handle more traffic? So that would be another reason that maybe it's a good idea to wait, and not push it through right away? Because we don't know how much this, bigger parking lots, bigger buildings, now they want bigger buildings, bigger signs, bigger everything. Could you agree that maybe it'd be a good idea to wait on that?
I guess I wouldn't commit to that. I would say that a parking lot doesn't generate any traffic. It's the uses happening adjacent to it.
Exactly. But why would you build a big parking lot if you're not expecting more traffic? I'm just asking, because, you know, you're coming at me, and saying you're looking at the public's best interest. It doesn't feel that way.
And I wouldn't want to seem like I'm coming at you. I'm just trying to address some of the comments that you asked about traffic studies or groundwater studies. And I just want to let you know what we have and haven't studied in the area.
Okay. I do appreciate that. I appreciate you addressing that. Please consider what I've said. Please consider putting this on hold, so that you can look at some of these things that are real problems for the public that lives in Boulder Ridge, and in the surrounding areas. And I would really appreciate that.
Very good. Thank you for your comments, Dawn. With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item.
My name is Todd Olmer. I am blessed to have Dawn Olmer as my wife. I just wanted to finish up with two things that possibly weren't addressed. And she did a wonderful job. She, I really married up, didn't I? Excuse me, but Normandy is a situation where the infrastructure of Boulder Ridge has never been completed. We have, we have a Boulder Ridge Road. We have Normandy, which you've got to come back onto Boulder Ridge to get to LaSalle, to school. I've addressed this to the Knudsen's already. Why hasn't that road been put in? That is a situation that would alleviate traffic as well. But the reason it hasn't been done is because of expense. Somebody has to pay for it. Knudsen's don't want to pay for it. So they go to a different avenue. That's what's happened here. And, my friend, you need to wake up and go to, go to school at eight o'clock, and see all of these people rolling in to that school. And then you need to stay there at three-thirty. I encourage you all to do that. That's your job. I encourage you to do that. And you will have a total different attitude about all of this. Again, the reason I don't speak is because my wife is so elegant. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Todd. With that, the podium is open for others. Eventually, it comes to that point.
Right. Let me put my name down here. So I'm a future Bowden resident.
And your name is, sir?
Sean Algren. So I'm a local, small-business owner. Owned my business for twenty-four years. And I've never came across something that's such a great opportunity as Bowden's Development. Now, over the years, I've had a lot of clients, had a lot of wealthy people that are landowners, business owners, that have came to me with opportunities to build a building. And none of them even come close to what Cam, and Parker, and Tom have offered. The fact that you can get a beautiful building built, in a neighborhood that is appealing to my type of businesses, for less cost than I could imagine. So a lot of people talk about where the location is, and the appealing part, the not-appealing part. For me, the type of buildings that they're building has not been done in Bismarck. You can go to Fargo, you can go to Minneapolis, you can go to some areas different than Bismarck. But I can't name a place, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, can't name a place anywhere else in Bismarck where you can get single-office buildings that are as beautiful and conveniently located as this. So those are some of my appeals of building with them. Obviously, some of the concerns is increased traffic. Right now, I'm guessing you guys have twenty people that probably show up to Bowden every week. So the traffic reports probably aren't going to show anything different. Any school location that you go by, obviously, schools are busy, eight-thirty, three-thirty. You know, most businesses, you know, employees show up at seven-forty-five, leave at five. So the increased traffic there, I don't think is going to be a big issue. And then, these aren't buildings for commercial that are standard commercials, like the ones that I think are still in Boulder Ridge, just to the south, that are big, two-story buildings that have seventeen different businesses in them, with big parking lots. These are nice-looking, therapy places, home builders, lawyers, planning team, financial advisors, which, in my standpoint, adds value to the community. Because you want to get physical therapy for your kid, hey, guess what, right down the road. You know, you want to leave school and go meet with your financial advisor, right down the road. Could be chiropractors, could be dental offices, whatever the case is. So it adds value to me. But the fun part for me, as a business owner, to look at a desirable place in the middle of town, next to, you know, easy road to get access to, is just wonderful. And then to have the opportunity to actually own it is even better. Because there's a lot of properties for sale that are commercial, but don't have anything that's really attractive to those businesses. And this has an opportunity where you can sit down, and you can build a floor plan, and it's not a square building. For example, like, can't think of another commercial building that's not a shop, where I could have a garage. We get shipments to our office every day from FedEx, UPS. And I'm looking forward to where I can just open the garage door, and they can drop it off, and not walk through, go to an elevator, go up to the second floor, deliver packages. You know, little things like that are appealing to me. The parking that we have, we're going to have eighteen stalls, or eighteen parking spots. I have fourteen vehicles, so now I have four extra parking spots. Cam introduced, you know, adding a parking lot to that area. It might not affect my business, but what would be cool about it is if I hold a Christmas party. Now I have a place where-- Now I have a place where people that I invite in for a Christmas party can maybe park, they don't have to park along the road, or, you know, etc. So I can see the advantages of that. But just a little different perspective on the thing that I think is almost revolutionary for Bismarck. It's great. I'm glad you approved it. So that's all my comments, and if you have any questions?
Commissioners? Commissioner Field.
So how many employees do you have?
I have 14.
14 employees?
Yeah.
I guess when I sit here and I look at us discussing this, this is quite similar to a couple of, or last month, when they wanted us to put it right next to residential on 52nd, we said no. Because of the people that bought their properties, were always told that that was always going to be residential. And we looked at it from what's happening in the neighborhood, and we turned that one down. And I guess, you know, they can get everybody out here to come stand up. I'm still going to be a no on this one, because I can feel for the people that bought 500 lots, on the understanding that that was always going to be a neighborhood, not a commercial business. So I can see why the residents are upset. I mean, I don't have this problem. I live on 16 acres out of town. That's why I live there. I don't want you in front of me. I don't want to see anybody else. But I can see when people have a dream, and they paid, you know, huge money, that that should be respected.
Thank you, Commissioner Field. Commissioners, any additional questions?
Yeah, and I just look at it a little differently, because to me, those commercial buildings are part of the community, part of the neighborhood, and that adds value, in my opinion.
I don't think there's any other questions for you, Sean. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
With that, the podium's open.
Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Parker Platzen with Epic. And I just wanted to just throw a couple of comments out there, and anyone who has any questions can certainly ask them. One word that got used, that I definitely don't appreciate of Cam in particular, was the word fraudulent, and that is the furthest thing from, from the truth. He's been nothing but transparent since the beginning of this process. And in fact, in Phase 1, asked for a lot of community feedback on multiple occasions, and asked for people to contact him directly. So I just want to point out that I think he's gone above and beyond what, I think he's coined as the evil developer sometimes, but he does go above and beyond to make sure that he does take feedback into account. And he's definitely done that, and I've seen that firsthand. Also, I think it's important to recognize that Cam didn't develop Boulder Ridge. And I think he gets grouped in because of his last name commonly, but he was not the one who developed Boulder Ridge. Doesn't have anything to do with any of the streets getting built within that area. And I think also, just his intent is always for the betterment of the community, and of all of his developments, and I think he takes great care and attention to all those. In terms of traffic, I used to live on Basalt Drive, which is two blocks from this, from this development. So I'm, I understand the traffic flow in that area. I also show up to work around 8:00. And I genuinely have not noticed a huge difference. I think it's also important to point out that the development has been intentional about making the commercial buildings look very residential. I think if yourselves drove by, you would see that there's definitely a residential flair to all the buildings, and that's what was presented early on, and that still continues to be the theme. And then in terms of parking, all the, all the parking in the development is off-street parking. There is no on-street parking allowed. And I think that's just an important distinction to make as well. So that's all that I have.
Commissioners, questions? You said your name was Parker, right?
Parker Platzen, yep.
Parker, okay. Questions for Parker? I'll follow up with Commissioner Field's question. With Epic, how many employees do you have that would be working at the location?
At our Bismarck location, there would be five.
Five, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
The podium is open for others that would care to address.
Sorry, I just want to clarify. I never said anything bad about Cam. I would never say anything bad about Cam. What I meant was, when you're, it's zoned a certain way, and the development is zoned a certain way, and you buy your house based on that, it's fraudulent to buy it based on that, and then find out later that it can change, because nobody knew that. So I would never say that. And I see your Epic sign from my window, so yes, I know you're back there. But thank you.
Thank you, Don. With that, last call. Anybody that would like to step up to the podium? It is open. Okay, I'm not seeing or hearing any, so with that, I'm going to close the public hearing on this agenda item. Commissioners, this is a request for a future land use plan amendment, and zoning map amendment. And before I go, I should ask Daniel if you have any final comments.
Yes, Chair, a little more detail on the landscape buffer. So 20 feet minimum required on the east side of the area that would change. There's a selection of shade trees, ornamental trees, coniferous trees, shrubs, so forth, every 100 feet that would need to be planted. Or if they chose a six-foot screened fence, they could skip some of the shrubs and smaller trees. But that, that's the requirement, and that would be assessed at the site plan level.
Okay, very good. Thank you for the detail. Commissioner Wagon.
I have a question for Daniel. Before the current approval, as Bowden addition stands right now, what was this property zoned at? I do not remember, but I don't believe it was zoned R5 prior to the Bowden addition, was it?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Commissioner Wagon. I actually just checked that myself while we were meeting. It was zoned a combination of R5 and A agricultural before the Bowden addition. So part of it was R5, and part of it was agricultural at that time.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you, Commissioner. Back to where I was, there's two requests here, future land use plan amendment and zoning map amendment. Staff recommendation is to approve both. Commissioners, what are your wishes? And you've got to pick something, so we can talk about this.
Move to approve as presented, both, for both.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. We have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Wagon. With that, Commissioners, I open up the floor for discussion. Thought you did, Commissioner Field. Thank you. Commissioners? Online Commissioners, comments? If not, I guess I will start out. You know, I understand reasonable expectations for zoning, and, you know, that, I've been sitting on this commission for over a dozen years, and that has been a theme that has come through, that people that own property have a reasonable expectation. But of course, when you don't own the property next to you, you never know what's going to happen with it. And that's, that's a risk of buying where you are. I appreciated Don's comments, and I understand, you know, unless you own the property and control it, you're not going to be able to do that. But I also understand reasonable expectations. I will tell you that for as long as I've sat here and watched Bismarck grow, I've understand the need for moving business out of the city center. Not everything can reside there, and it needs to be, it's a part of Bismarck's growth, where, where businesses need to move out more. Now, how we do that, and do it in a way that doesn't impact people, that's a tough one. That's a tough question. And I guess that's why there's 11 of us sitting on this commission, because we all have different perspectives. My perspective, of course, is for the city. I represent the city in these conversations, and it makes it tough for me, because I understand where residents are coming from, and I also understand where business is coming from. And so needless to say, I'm, I'm torn on this particular vote, and I'm interested to know what other folks think about it.
You know, when he asked the question, what it, what the original zoning was, and at that point, he said, what, residential and agriculture? So when all these people bought those houses and lots, that's what that neighborhood was. So I can see why they didn't like the first change to that. And when there's property across the road that there are sayings available, why did, why did the commission change it last time? Why didn't they tell them, go on the other side of the street? It's already commercial, it's right there. I mean, what is it, a couple hundred feet further away? So I, I don't know. This is a very difficult thing, because I know I'd be upset if I moved into a development, which I personally would never do, especially in HOA. Because I don't like telling people what to do, and I don't like being told what to do. So that wouldn't be somewhere I personally would live. But it does sound like, from the expectations, that everybody knew there was a strict set of rules going into this, so they had the reasonable expectation that they were living in a non-commercial neighborhood. So from that standpoint, I know we can't move it back to residential ag, but I don't think it should have been changed last time, which I wasn't on the commission, so I don't have to claim any credit for that.
Fair enough. Commissioner Zent, you're shaking your head. Thoughts?
I live up in that area, more towards the west, but traffic is always growing, anywhere in Bismarck, just because we've got more people here. So traffic has never been an issue. And I've never seen any businesses that would cause home values to go down. Home values do not go down in Bismarck, so. Might be less desirable to move there by this one family than as opposed to another, but values of homes remain the same or go up. So it is, it is a tricky situation. I understand both sides, but we've got to have growth in Bismarck, and I think we've got to do it in the right, right order, and take a good look at it.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Wagon, you look like you're deep in thought.
I'll share some of my thoughts. This, this original project, when it was approved, it was a challenge then, and it is much of a challenge this time with, with these proposed changes. But a big part of my position and my perspective on this is, when you have a growing community, and you have property next to you that's zoned ag, you don't know what that's going to be in the future. You, you don't know that that's going to become residential. You don't know if it's going to become commercial, industrial, or anything. And, and that's just a fact in life. As the community grows out, the needs change. You can make assumptions that it's going to be zoned a specific way, but you do not know until there's a plan, and it gets zoned different. And that's why I supported the Bowden addition the first time. I would not have supported it if it had been previously zoned as an R5, and changing it, but due to the fact that it had been agriculture, and it had not been decided what the future was.
Thank you for your comment. Commissioner Wagon. Commissioner Lukens? I hate to put you on the spot, but-
Yeah, I think I'm just echoing, I think, what a lot of us have said. I'm just very torn. You know, several of my in-laws live in that neighborhood, so I'm frequently there a lot. And it, yeah, it's just a very, very difficult situation to, us representing what we feel is the best for the city, and best for its residents. It is tough, so I'm taking some thought there. Yeah, all things considered, so.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Commissioner Schmidt, I know you're online there, and you must have some thoughts, too.
Well, I mean, it's, if we look at what the 2045 plan, or 2050 plan is, and what the concepts are in development, there's a large desire to have small office-type opportunities within neighborhoods for the exact purpose of providing professional-type services, medical chiropract, whatever, chiropractor, dental, legal professional, investment services. As you look at other communities across the country, that's, that's pretty much how they're going. If this, if these buildings are not being constructed in a manner, and looking and feeling much more like a residential office versus the office building I'm sitting in at the moment, which is clearly a three-story, two-wing building, that'd be a whole different, a whole different game. And that land, a lot part, a big portion of that land, as is every piece of land that we're talking about in North Bismarck, was once agricultural. And so as Commissioner Wagon has mentioned, we don't know what agricultural land becomes when we, when we grow. And so I think, as long as the buffers are in place, that are appropriate, and we aren't having extensive traffic, those, those businesses that are in Bowden right now, they don't have traffic coming and going on a regular basis throughout the day. Those people pretty much go there and stay there. They're there probably longer than the kids are in school, before they leave. I, I know it's hard to accept, but I, it's, it's an appropriate usage of the land, I believe.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. And Commissioner Shell, I don't want to leave you out of this.
No, I mean, I try to take a look at each issue on its own, and really, the zoning request is a combination of the building area, where they can't increase the, the overall square footage of what they were already by right to have, it's just how much is garage, and how much is building. So I see that as a, as a non-issue. The concept of shared parking, in some ways, could be viewed as a benefit to, to the neighborhood, because there's then one less building that is generating traffic coming into and out of, whether it's a single-family home, a twin home, or an office complex-type building. Having a spot for them to, to locate those vehicles, and participate in whatever activities might be happening in one of the adjacent buildings, I see as, as a good thing. The addition of additional landscaping buffering is a good thing for the neighborhood, and I guess the sign thing, I'm probably neutral towards, in terms of one large 60-foot, 60-square-foot sign, or two 45-foot square signs, it's probably, it's a wash to me. So probably the bigger thing then is just the lots that we're bringing into that zoning district, and not so much the zoning district changes that are, that are happening. I would think, I'm not going to put a lot of weight on the future residents of the land that is currently within Bowden, because that is, I guess, the developer's desire. If he wants to have a neighbor that's a, a parking lot, and the next-door neighbor is a single-family home, great, if you think there's a market for that. I'm not going to stand in that person's way of marketing it that way. So I see this as more so, what is the impact to the adjacent neighborhood? And that's where I'd be thinking, that what they have now compared to what this amendment would be, I don't see a lot of changes from swapping out 10 twin homes to two buildings and a parking lot. It's probably a wash from the traffic volumes, and so I don't see a lot of difference in those two proposals, so I'd be supporting this.
Okay, thank, thank you for your comments. With that being said, I've appreciated the development that's taken place up there so far, and I tend to agree with Commissioner Shell, in that I don't see a huge difference in the makeup of the neighborhood with the changes that are being proposed. But I do, I do really, like I said, I sympathize with the residents out there, and, and their expectations for how things should be. So with that, we have a motion on the table to approve and to second. Any additional discussion? I'm not seeing any. Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Field?
No.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagon?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
And Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. With that, we'll move on to item H under our regular agenda. Huckler Park subdivision, block one, lot one. It's a request for a rural residential lot split and Jenny is going to provide us with staff briefing this evening.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, Jason and Mary Kobolinski are requesting approval of a rural residential lot split of lot one, block one, Huckler Park subdivision. This request is located in northwest, or no, located northwest of Bismarck, west of River Road in the southeast quadrant of the intersection of Sandy River Drive and Fernwood Drive. The request would split lot one from east to west, creating two separate parcels. The southern parcel would be 2.11 acres and contain the existing single-family dwelling and accessory buildings. The northern parcel would be five acres. The applicant has indicated that they intend to construct a new single-family dwelling on the northern parcel. The property is located within the rural residential zoning district. The minimum lot size for a property within this zoning district is 65,000 square feet. Both parcels meet this minimum requirement. Lot one is currently accessed from Fernwood Drive and there is a platted non-access line along the north side of the lot adjacent to Sandy River Drive. The Burleigh County engineer has indicated that access to both parcels shall be from Fernwood Drive. Fernwood Drive adjacent to the property is not paved. The Burleigh County Commission at their meeting on December 16th of last year granted approval of a developer waiver to waive the construction and paving requirements of Fernwood Drive. A copy of the waiver was attached to your staff report. The public has been notified of this request. A notice was published in the Tribune on March 14th and 21, 21st, and 50 postcards were mailed to the owners of nearby properties on the 14th of March. Hick Creek Township was also notified of this request in February. We have received one phone inquiry regarding this project, neither for or against, again, just curious. This request was evaluated according to the standards contained within the comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and state law. As a result of all the findings contained in the staff reports, staff find that the proposed rural residential lot split would not adversely impact public health, safety, and general welfare and is consistent with the comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and state law. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the rural residential lot split for lot one, block one, Huckler Park subdivision. Do you have questions?
Question for Jenny. Not seeing or hearing any, Jenny.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll open up the public hearing for this agenda item and is either the request or a representative here.
Chair Schwartz, London, I'm Laura Swinson, again engineering, representing the Kobolinski is here. Yeah, literally nothing to add to what Jenny had just presented with you, but I can certainly answer any questions if you have them.
Fair enough. Commissioners, questions? I'm not seeing or hearing any.
Thank you.
Thanks, London. With that, the podium's open for others that would address this agenda item. And I'm not seeing or hearing any, so with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, this is a request for a rural residential lot, excuse me, a rural residential lot split and staff recommends approval. What are your wishes? And Jenny, I guess, Jenny, I should ask, any final comments?
Thank you, but I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Zent?
Second.
Okay. We have a second from Commissioner Lukens. Any additional discussion? Not seeing or hearing any, so Sarah, please call roll.
Commissioner Wagon?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
And Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. Moving on to item I under our regular agenda. Misty Waters, Misty Waters first replat and Misty Waters second replat. And it's a request for a zoning map amendment and Jenny is going to provide us with staff briefing.
Chairman Schwartz, commissioners, the community development department is requesting approval of a zoning map amendment from an existing PUD planned unit development to a new PUD for Misty Waters, Misty Waters first replat and Misty Waters second replat. This request is located northwest of Bismarck, west of River Road, along the west-north-south portion of Burnt Creek Loop and consists of approximately 150 acres. You considered the zoning map amendment at your meeting last month and called for a public hearing. The original PUD for Misty Waters was adopted in June of 2005 and identified the rear yard setback as 30 feet for all lots except those adjacent to the Missouri River. The PUD was amended in August 2006 to alter the setback to an elevation of 1640.3 as delineated by a contour alive described in a letter of map revision, which was approved by FEMA in 2005. A recent North Dakota Supreme Court ruling determined that this lomar was to function as a setback from the bay. As such, some of the structures within Misty Waters encroach into that setback. The PUD was amended in August of 2024 at the request of the owners of lots 30 through 36 and lots 38 and 39, block one of Misty Waters, to identify the interior edge of a platted 20-foot drainage easement as the rear yard setback for their lots. Soon after, the city commission in August 2024 directed community development staff to create a new PUD for the entire Misty Waters development that would establish a consistent rear yard setback for all properties adjacent to the bay. A stakeholder group, including residents of Misty Waters, a representative of the Misty Waters Homeowners Association, local consulting engineers, and city and county staff was formed in fall of last year. We met three times between October and November to identify setback options and debate the merits of each. It is the consensus of the stakeholder group that the rear yard setback be identical to the interior edge of the platted 20-foot drainage easements for all properties adjacent to the bay. However, tying the setback to the drainage easement is problematic as easements can be vacated through the plat modification process. The city commission at their meeting in January of this year vacated a portion of this easement for a property within Misty Waters at the request of the property owner. To solve this problem, the group determined that a surveyor's affidavit identifying the building setback would be recorded with a Burleigh County recorder and the recording date and document number be specifically referenced in the PUD ordinance. Toman Engineering, the firm that platted Misty Waters, has prepared the surveyor's affidavit. It's on your screen there. The surveyor's affidavit includes bearings and distances of the interior edge of the drainage easement so the building setback can be located in the field when necessary. Once recorded, the line depicted on the affidavit would be available to current and prospective property owners, surveyors, engineers, and builders, as well as city staff. A copy of the surveyor's affidavit, obviously is on the screen here, was also included in your packet. Staff also was able to create an interactive map showing the area and the proposed setback. That link was included in the staff report and I hope folks that were able to see the staff report and read through it were able to use that link. Some residential lots do not have access to the bay. The rear yard setback for these lots will continue to be 30 feet as required in the original PUD. The rear yard setback for properties adjacent to the Missouri River will also stay the same. That rear yard setback is 100 feet measured from the ordinary high water mark of the river. Lot three, block one of Misty Waters is also adjacent to the bay. This lot does not include the platted drainage easement. The rear yard setback for this lot is proposed to be 50 feet. The setback is similar to the setback of the adjacent residential lots to the north of this property in Tranquil Circle. Yards adjacent to the channel connecting the bay to the Missouri River are considered side yards and not subject to the rear yard requirements. The proposed PUD replaces the current ordinance language created in 2005 and amended six times in the last 20 years due to development changes and replating portions of Misty Waters. The PUD for the original Misty Waters subdivision, so Misty Waters original, I guess, is outlined in red. Misty Waters first replat is in green and Misty Waters second replat is in blue. The PUD has been reconfigured to our standard outline for PUDs. The most substantive change to the PUD is to establish that new rear yard setback for properties adjacent to the bay. But additional changes include removing reference to conformance to submitted documents. This section is from the original PUD and references documents that were submitted with the PUD, very likely building design and in-size requirements. Staff no longer has access to these documents and would not be able to enforce this portion. Removing reference to specific number of single-family and two-family or multifamily residential lots within the development. This section again is from the original ordinance and notes that 121 single-family residential units and up to 32 family residential units constructed in condominium associations or townhomes or townhomes project with mutual agreements and obligations was included. It does not appear that the property is now platted to include 32 family residential units. Based on our count with current modifications and combinations of lot, there appears to be roughly 111 single-family lots and four two-family lots within the development. These are in Misty Waters first replat. Keeping this section in the ordinance is really just not necessary. We also removed the section referring to lot modifications. Lot modifications are a common practice within our standard operating procedures of every day. We do lot modifications throughout the community. We didn't feel that it was necessary to specifically reference that again. We've done many lot modifications throughout this subdivision. I also want to note that there are no changes proposed for Misty Waters second replat. That's the area in blue. That's the storage unit development that was approved fairly recently. No changes are proposed for that portion of the property. The public has been notified of this request. A notice was published in the Tribune on March 14th and 21st and 187 postcards were mailed to the owners of nearby properties on March 14th. We have received one phone call about the project, specifically if changes were going to be proposed for that storage unit development. The request was evaluated according to the standards contained within the comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and state law. As a result of all the findings contained in the staff reports, staff find that the proposed zoning map amendment would not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare and is consistent with the comprehensive plan, code of ordinances, and state law. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the zoning map amendment from the existing PUD to a new PUD for Misty Waters, Misty Waters first replat and Misty Waters second replat. Do you have questions?
Commissioners, questions for Jenny? Commissioner Shell?
Always have one question at least. I've got two here. Jenny, if this is approved, would the setback line be monumented out there or would it be up to each individual, you know, home builder or applicant when they want to build something to have a surveyor come out and monument and then replicate what would be the Toman Engineering line and ensure that it's done? Just maybe just a question if that was discussed at the stakeholder group or not.
It wasn't specifically discussed, Commissioner Shell. However, I'm assuming it would be the latter, but I've got an engineer that was on the stakeholder committee in the audience here. He can address it when he comes up.
And then second question, if this was approved, if this was the setback line, are there any non-conforming properties within this or is that a settled issue and it's nothing that this board has to concern ourselves with?
Sure. Good question. If this is a, it's been a long evening, hasn't it? If this is approved as proposed, we, there will not be any non-conformities. There won't be any encroachments into this line.
Thank you very much.
Okay, commissioners, additional questions for Jenny? And I should learn to count, but how many properties are impacted that actually sit on the bay? I should learn to count.
Ballpark, yeah. Ballpark, probably 115.
115, thereabouts. Okay. Thank you. And can you, one more question. Can you comment on the makeup of the stakeholder group? And not specific names, but just a cross-section of...
City and county staff from county engineering and city engineering, our office, member of the HOA, a resident, two engineers from consulting firms. Another resident who's also a builder and a developer and has done some work in the subdivision as well.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll open up the public hearing on this agenda item. Is the requister or representative or... I see Mike, you're running to the podium.
And I will do this right away. I was a volunteer on the committee, so my employer was not involved in this process as far as the input.
Would you put your name on the log?
Yes, I can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Doesn't, I guess the pen is kind of working. Okay. There's enough here to where you can recognize the intermittent hieroglyphics. Okay. I want to commend staff. We went through a number of issues. There was a number of views of prior history stuff. There were stuff in old files that, you know, wasn't accessible early on that they had to go back and find. So it, like I said, I just need to commend staff. It worked out really well. From the standpoint of monumenting, the legal description that's out there that was put together by Toman Engineering, their surveyor, there had been no monuments specifically set relative to that. However, if anyone was previously monumented relative to the stormwater easement that's out there. If there's a need to actually go monument that, that could be done. Who actually takes care of that expense, I'm not sure. But they easily could be monumented because the meets and bounds points along there can easily be replicated by any surveyor who's doing a lot certificate out there. So it works out really well. From the non-conforming side, we had a lot of questions of what's conforming, what's non-conforming. There were some complications in different properties and all of those, like I said, I commend staff for working through those particular issues. If there are later technical questions that you have as you go through your discussion, be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'd stand for questions.
Okay. Very good. Commissioners, questions for Mike right now? Not hearing or seeing any. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, the podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item. Wow. We're quiet this evening. I'll extend the offer one more time before I close the public hearing.
Lucky I cut my presentation down to a third. My name is Pat Spillman. I and my wife own lots 60 and 61 and I'm here not in favor of the putt amendment. Reason being is I don't believe everything has been considered and I don't believe it is fair and equitable to everyone. I suppose I can start off with, I hate to do this. How best to display this, boss? Oops, 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 oops.
Daniel, can you hold that up? Maybe Pat can point things out? The other camera? Okay.
Last night I practiced color by number. Each lot is color-coded for what happens and while it is unscientific, it's not a survey, what I did was took an existing drawing with the lomar line on it and compared it to what the new setback line is. And these orange colors are lots that gain area to build on. White is no change on the bay lots. And three people actually lose property because the drainage easement is landward or towards the street side and they lose property on which to build. And I just thought I should frame who wins, who loses. The winners can be a very small increment. The gainers can actually have 50 foot more from the rear, from the lomar towards the water across their property. And so I did that. It's easy to see. Just was asking, going to ask a couple of things on your exhibit if you could get a map bar. So when I blow up the drawing, I know what the, all of the, what the dimensions are. Like I say, this is an unscientific based on two drawings. Line widths become feet when you do that, but I just want you, it's the best shot at it. And it would have to be verified with a survey or the legal descriptions, but this is my best guess who wins and who loses. Oops. Here's another one. And what I did to show, you know, fair and equitable, once again, my house is on this side, this is my house. New setback line was the, oops. The, where I'm at is on my lot exhibit. Fingers are dry. Sorry.
Pat, if I may ask, what are the yellow lines on your map?
Those are the lot lines. Those are the lot lines. Those are the lot lines. Ah, okay, now I'll try this. I'll try this one. Oops, going the wrong way. Anyway, long story short, the Lomar line and the interior edge of the drainage easement are congruent, one in the same, on my property. And so I gained... Oops, I gained absolutely nothing in the process. There we go. This was done, and if you know it on the drawing, the Lomar line and backyard setback are shown at the elevation. It happens to be the interior edge of the drainage easement. If you take a look at another property, this property gains approximately 49.9 feet of buildable space on the rear of their lot in the process. That being said, I'm still looking for that fair and equitable portion of all of this. Couple of things in the past has been brought up is this drainage easement. I can't find where it is required. I was the one that got the drainage easement released on my property. Mr. Erath is after me all the time. You know, it's an easement, and it needs to be followed. What I think really happens is, and he always refers, have you seen the stormwater calculations for Misty Waters? I have. I've got a copy. I've always had it. If you go to the very end of the stormwater calculations, there's a statement by the registered engineer that says, "After construction, erosion and sediment control shall be achieved by final landscaping of the homeowners of the proposed development. The final landscaping shall be done in accordance with development's covenants." I really think that's what it is. You can't find where that drainage easement is delineated. And if you talk to Mr. Veetmeyer, the assessor, he believes they should be. I worked for a company where we did miles and miles and miles of easements for different projects. All of them have a legal survey attached, and I would recommend that go forward for any kind of easement in the city. It's the only way you can be sure of what you got and what you don't. So anyway, with that said, I got more questions than I got answers. Another one that came with the stormwater calculations was I'm wondering if the city is collecting calculations for rebar and reinforcement of the foundations at Misty Waters per a memo way back when by Mr. Manchester, who is a registered professional engineer, recommending and pretty much insisting and requiring it because much of the property out there is on sand fill from the river, and he wanted to make sure everybody was good with that. My biggest question is, why are we changing the setback at this point in time? I was one of the... I believe I was the first one to buy lots out at Misty Waters. My wife and I signed a purchase agreement in November 4th of 2005. I have the same expectations of what you heard these people before. The setbacks were set. We got in 2006, the 2000, what they call Lomar, letter of map revision was adopted as the rear setback. That setback is an elevation and a meets and bounds survey, and that has sufficed through this part, arc, till this time, I'm sorry. And that's been adequate. I don't understand the change. I know why the change is. It's because there was air on a building permit and somebody built over, and nobody respected the Lomar itself, so come up with a new setback to make the construction compliant, for lack of better. And so I don't see what is fair and equitable. I still see the... Excuse me, the Lomar line is fine. Here is my building permit. It specifies front yard 25, rear side 10, rear yard 30 feet, same as the new one that... the new home that was not compliant. He got the same dimensions, but yet, as you seen on my building exhibit, I've met the building setback requirement. And so I just really can't see what the need for change is. And what it really hasn't been thought out too is now you've got two sets... You've got homes that have been completed with one setback. The new setback moves further. We're going to have all kinds of these homes that can stick out further than what are those constructed. And so we're going to have to have peers built and all... or Phil brought in for the construction of the homes if they want to move all the way out to their limit of their building setback. And so now we've just compounded the problems we already have out there. I have a... I own a vacant lot next to me, and if I push out, I can tell you my neighbor lady is going to come unglued, just as some other people have the way we go. And if you can push it out 50 foot past an existing home front, there's no guarantees. I understand in North Dakota about view shed and all the rest, but that's what you've done. And then, if the city couldn't manage a fixed set or a Lomar line, how are you going to manage a fixed one when you've got to combine that with the Lomar line? Who's going to tell builders and residents that they have to comply with the Lomar too? Or otherwise, they're going to have to bring in Phil and fill up in order... They have to get a low... They have to get a new Lomar for their property in order to take advantage of the new longer setback distance from front to back. Who's going to do that and be responsible for that? So you've created an, I don't know, bigger mess than what we already have. Not sure that's to the advantage of the development. And so right now, I have a question about how many noncompliance structures do we have existing without this change? It's kind of hard to... One day I get a letter from the city, says there's 16 to 17. Now I think it's down to four. And what... How many do we really have? That's a... I would like to know that. Has FEMA been notified of these noncompliance structures? I also want to know what the city defines as coverage for the lots. Therefore, personally, if just a Chris Roy review, you see it there... They are... I would have to guess they're in violation of the existing covenants and that. There's going to... There's... I have some hesitation about communication on this. Next time the city puts out something, I'd like to get more than eight days' notice on this item. We were sent postcards. Bismarck Tribune isn't used very much anymore. I don't know how you fix that, but we got... I got my notice last Wednesday in the mail. Where we're at, sometimes our mail delivery is two weeks after the fact. Slow, problems there. But, you know, and a couple of other questions I have. Does the city have the authority to, you know, to unilaterally change an ordinance to grandfather in known violations? We have those homes that are past the existing ordinance setback. Can the city just pick up and... On my private property, tell me that I have a new setback? And the last one I have are, you know, how are we going to be compensated? I get nothing. Some of these lots get 50-plus, 50 feet in order to build on, gives their property more value. And for... And how are we going to be compensated for all this? I am not in favor of the putt amendment. Thank you.
Commissioners, Commissioner Field. Don't leave, Pat.
You know, this isn't the first time we've had this discussion, and this isn't the first time we've had the pleasure of you coming up and explaining this to us. And last time, nine of the 11 commissioners said to leave it the way it's always been because that's when it was bought. That's how everybody's expectations were. But we got overridden by the city council. They're the ones that changed it. So anybody watching this issue, nobody... Well, two commissioners voted for changing it. Everybody else said no. And we spent many, many hours listening to both sides. So in this case, even if we say no tonight and put it back the way it was, the city council's going to make the decision.
Yes, sir. I under... Yes, sir. I'm anticipating that. Understand that. But I got to... I got to come here and voice my opinion and bring some other things to the table. Just so you all know, in the state of North Dakota, the law changed first of the year. Some people think I'm antagonistic, all kinds of other things. If I promote wrongful information to the public, I didn't understand this the last time, I am just as guilty as the person doing it if I know better, right from wrong. It's in the North Dakota Sentry Code. Right now, I have a... I don't know what to call it. A request for further information on an opinion of another professional engineer. I don't need a lawyer. I don't need anything. You can do that professional to professional. It's in the Sentry Code. They have a certain amount of time to respond to that so that, you know, I, we can decide that, you know, whatever... Whatever the issue might be, if it's correct or not. This is getting... Yes. Moral of the story is, the drainage easement, I can't find... I have reviewed old, old documents from Toman Engineering, and here's a shout-out to the people of community development, plus one. I have not met one person that has not been more than cooperative in my request for records. There are two ladies this last week. I came in a hurry a few minutes before lunch, and I think they gave up after lunch to accommodate my request of finding documents way back in 2005. And I do appreciate the city putting documents online. Bravo. And I could save time for the city. But yes, enough of my story.
Commissioners, any additional questions for Pat?
I have one for you, Pat.
Go.
How were you notified of the specifics of the PUD change?
Postcard.
Yeah, but you didn't... Were the specifics on the postcard?
No, there was a... What do you call the digital little thing to go to and find?
Okay.
And you take a shot with your camera, and you get the website. It was Arc, whatever. Yes, and that works great. I... That's how I got the satellite picture, and I appreciate that, your GIS system and the work you guys do. Appreciate it much. I'm not a commercial guy. I'm retired. I thought I was retired, but ha-ha. But the moral of the story is, I appreciate that, having access to information. So thank you for that and the people.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, I will ask one more time. Podium is open.
Pat, do you have the signature page?
Oh, thank you.
Yep, no worries.
Yeah?
Do you have the signature page?
Well, sure. I forgot to do the last time. I thought there was someone else, but...
And the pen, too?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm going to make this really short. You guys have heard me before. I'm Teresa Reese.
Thank you.
I am one of the homeowners out there at Misty Waters. I'm one of the ones that benefited from the last, what was it called? Adjustment agreement? What was that thing called that we were here for last? So my house was... We bought our lot out there. So the whole thing boiled down to, from the last time that we were up here, was there's a lot of us homes out there that didn't have the proper information from the builders. It was a whole culmination of everything that was just completely mixed up. We were given the gratis from everybody last time for our street dream circle to be extended so that we didn't have to tear our homes down. At that time, we also asked, we also had, that we wanted to do the whole development. At that time, we just didn't have time because of all the other homes that didn't have the proper information. Pat is amazing. He is an amazing digger into information. He is... He goes and does the extra step. I'm not that person. A lot of us that build our homes are not that type of person that goes out there and looks for information. We're given the information from our developers, from the city, from the planners, from everything, and we're going by those guidelines that we've been provided. We didn't know we were beyond that easement court. We were told the easement corridor. We didn't... Not all of us knew there even was a Lomar at that time. So the prior decision to give us that variance, again, we're extending that to the rest of those people out there in our development that... that we didn't get to at that time, that we weren't able to. So we're just trying to make it right for everybody that lives out there. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening. Could I get you to put your name on the log and...
Yes. My name is Amanda Malam, and we purchased our home in 2020, and it was built in 2008. When this all came about, we had it surveyed, and we found out that our house was over the line, and so I am in favor of changing it for everyone.
Okay. Questions for Amanda?
I object to the proposed PUD setback change and the rezoning change.
Sir, could I get you to introduce yourself?
Yes, you will. My name is Jerry Kederling.
Jerry, thank you.
I am a homeowner, and I am directly affected by this proposed PUD setback change. I am here tonight to formally object to this action, which I believe is not only unjust but is also potentially unlawful. My home was built by a builder who lawfully abided in good faith, followed the setback requirements. These setback requirements have been in place for over 19 years. Let's just call it 20 years, to be generous. I respected the covenant and the building codes that govern our neighborhood, trusting that the city would do the same. We entered into a covenant when I bought that property. It's a blood covenant between you and I. Now, under this proposed change, I lose access to buildable property that I own. Pat just represented a drawing up here, which I personally have counted. There's over 50 or 60 homes there that all have gains. So now we're in the business of selecting winners and losers. I'm not willing to be a loser. I will lose a portion of the right of my own land, a portion that I planned for using for lawful improvements to my land. Yes, I too would like a swimming pool. Yes, I too would like a gazebo. Those can no longer be achieved with the new setback. This action rewards violators and punishes compliant owners. I have no hard feelings towards people who accidentally got ensnared. What I do have a problem with is, how did they get ensnared and build properties that were over their setbacks? Whose responsibility is that? I think I'm looking at you. It is the city's responsibility. It is not the homeowner. It is not the builder. You guys are in charge of authorizing these things, not a homeowner's association. This proposal was designed to cover up past failures of enforcement, not to improve this community one iota. This is a de facto take... taking without compensation. Myself and apparently from Pat's research, two other landowners are losing access to buildable property. They will lose the use of this land that they own. They will lose the use of this land that they own. That land had an intended legal use under the original zoning, and now we're being told we can no longer use it, or we are not, and furthermore, we're not being offered compensation for that. That by definition is a takeback. By the way, this may be a constitutional violation of our constitutional rights under the Fifth Amendment. This cha- this change will create winners and losers. Over fifty landowners will gain buildable land under the new setback. This increases the value of their lots, does it not? This increases the value of their property, does it not? Likewise, it increases the value of tax base for the city. Those gains may be reflected in higher property valuations, and which will raise the overall tax base of Misty Waters, a win for Bismarck. Meanwhile, I, and a few others, are being faced with reduced land usability, while we, we are still being subject to this increased property taxes due to an overall valuation increase of inflation. This is economic injustice. The city is in conflict of interest. The city benefits from this change, it stands to collect higher property taxes from the increased buildable land created through this rezoning. But the very reason that this proposal is, is in existence before us, is because the city failed its original duty to enforce its own code. The city cannot be both negligent actor and primary financial beneficiary. That is self-dealing and unethical. This undermines trust, law, and future compliance. Yes, your future compliance. If this action is approved, the city sends a clear message. If enough people break the rules, we'll rewrite this, the laws later. This destroys confidence in our land use governance, it invites more violations, and makes every landowner wonder, what's the point of following the law if it can be changed on a whim? The city has a responsibility to enforce, not erase, its regulations. I and a vast majority of us honored the rules, built lawfully, trusted the city to do the same, honoring our covenant that we entered into. Now, you are proposing to strip value from my land, limit my legal use of it, and offering nothing in return, all while shielding violators and padding the tax base. Let me be absolutely clear. Apologize, I'm going to change format here, because the rest of it is over here. This action takes away buildable use of land I rightfully own, reduces my property value, and increases my tax base through arbitrary inflation, while rewarding over fifty other lots with increased land value. That's not governance, that's political expedience, and it's wrong. Legal and constitutional concerns. Under both the North Dakota and the United States Constitution, governmental bodies cannot deprive property owners of land value or lawful use without just compensation. I haven't seen an offer made to me. What is being proposed may not be labeled a taking on paper, but in substance, that is precisely what it is. My plans are now on hold until a decision is made on this. I want this council to understand that moving forward with the proposed PUD setback changes, and proceeding with the rezoning, is not without legal risk. This business of immunity? No, absolutely not, gentlemen, not the case for a city. It may constitute a regulatory taking, especially if this setback changes materially reduces my ability to use the land that I paid for. It may violate equal protection principles, as it favors a group of fifty landowners, some of which may, by your own admission, be in violation. And it penalizes compliant owners like myself. It is likely a breach of vested property rights and legitimate investment-backed expectations I held when purchasing this property under the city's own ordinances upon which I signed a deed entering into a contract with the city. A better path. There still is time to do the right thing. Why don't we consider enforcing the original setback clause? After all, these setbacks have been enforced for the last twenty years. Guys, most of the homes have been built out there around that bay. We're not talking about hundreds of homes to be constructed yet, just a few to go. Speaking of which, that's a side, side note. Mike, I think I heard you say that meats and bounds survey can be easily replicated, so that's how we can find this drainage ditch thingamajigga.
Jerry, please turn back to the commissioner.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is that true? If a meats and bounds survey can be easily replicated, wasn't our original setback defined by a meats and bounds survey? I know it was. So that's kind of odd to me that we're creating a new meats and bounds survey to find a new setback when we already have a meats and bounds survey that defines our original setback. I'm confused, I couldn't do your job, that's for sure. So my recommendation is do not forward with the proposal as is, to rezone the entire community just to sanitize a mistake that was made. Guys, it was a mistake. I'm over that. It's fine, a mistake was made. Don't make another mistake just because that's the way you're going to get rid of this problem. That seems to be what this is all about, is this is a problem to the city, they just want it to go away. I'm here to say, I'm not going away, I own the property. This is un- this is a clear case of picking winners and losers, and I am a homeowner who did the right thing, I should not be forced to bear the burdens of, of the violations of others, or the city's failure to enforce their own laws. Tonight, I urge you, do not trade away the integrity of your own ordinances just to avoid, just to avoid the accountability. Do not take away my rights to use and develop the land which I lawfully entered into covenant with you. Do not penalize some landowners in attempt to correct the city's failure to enforce laws and governance. Do not pick fifty winners at the expense of defining a legal class of losers, so far three of us that we can see. I am against this proposal, and I ask you to reaffirm your commitment to governing justly, lawfully, and fairly. Reschedule this matter for further study until you have identified, as Pat asked, where's the equity? Let's identify equitable and ethical solutions. That solely falls within the city's responsibility. Take the ownership of the city's governance issues and act responsibly. That is what I ask of you. Thank you.
Questions for Jerry? Not seeing or hearing any, Jerry. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
The podium is open for others that would care to address this agenda item.
Hello, my name is Jason Sellers. Been up here many times before, unfortunately. I'm here tonight to ask for your support in this. You know, the majority of the development voted in favor of a PUD change out there, so remember that. Also, you know, our cul-de-sac benefit from it, myself and Teresa Reese's home, and there's others out there that still need some help. And the majority of the properties out there where the drainage easement and the Lomar line are one and the same, we're affecting, a lot of people won't even notice a change. But your, the amount of people that you're helping in this is far greater than the amount of people that won't even notice a change in that. You know, it's, this has gone on for too long, and we can end this tonight and move on with our lives, and, you know, have a common PUD out there, where discrepancies aren't as crazy as the previous, you know, variations throughout the development were. And I just ask for your support, I won't go into forty million other details, but, you know, I just thank you for your time and ask for your support tonight.
Okay, hold tight for just a second. Commissioners, do you have questions for Jason at all? Jason, I only have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
And that is your awareness of the number of lot owners out there that support it? How do you know that, or?
Yeah, yep, so there was a petition that was signed to change the covenants out there to a line that would be the interior edge of the drainage easement, which the proposed line tonight is one and the same of the interior edge of the drainage easement. So to change the covenants, you had to have over, I believe it was sixty-five percent of property owners to sign off on that, and there was significantly more than that that signed. So that's how I know.
Okay, so what you're saying is out of the, I think Jenny indicated there was a hundred and fifteen lots that sit on the water there?
Correct, there's eighty-some that signed off on it.
And there's eighty that signed off on it?
And some, obviously, were, we couldn't get ahold of, that had properties out there that don't have a home, or, you know, so there were some people that obviously weren't able to get ahold of. But even if you take those into account, it still met the required amount to change those covenants.
And the, and the remainder of the, what, thirty-five that they were either against it, or they didn't respond?
Or were not able to get ahold of them, correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
The podium is once again open. Okay, well, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, this is a request for a zoning map amendment. Staff recommendation is to approve. What are your wishes?
Move to approve as presented.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Schmitz. Do I hear a second?
I would second that.
We're ears, I have a second from Commissioner Shell. With that, I'll open the floor to Commissioner Discussion. Who would like to lead off? Commissioner Schmitz?
I, I would like to first correct a misstatement by one of the presenters. The city of Bismarck gains zero dollars as a result of any valuation adjustments at Misty Waters, because it is not part of our property that we collect tax on. So if there's gain, winner, any winner in it, which, under the current proposed laws that could come through the legislature, there will be almost no property tax adjustment anyway, going forward, unless there's brand-new development. This request is actually a request from the city commission to establish a line for setback that was more consistent across all the lots versus where the, some of the setbacks were as much as seventy-five feet or more off of the back of the lot, versus what this will be more consistent to the, whatever the current, this, this sets it at now. So that, that's why the city asked for it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Schmitz. Commissioner Shell, you had your hand up?
I, I was going to say the same thing on the tax piece, just to clarify that the city does not receive a tax valuation increase or decrease, it would not affect the city of Bismarck or Bismarck, Mark's and Rack for that matter.
Okay.
Of the ETA.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, thoughts, comments? Commissioner Zent?
So, so if there is a tax increase or decrease because some land was taken away for usage, is that Burley County then? Or who, who would benefit? There's not a town, organized township out there?
It would be Burley County and the school district.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Schmitz.
I could maybe add to, I probably can't speak specifically to how the, the county assessing views these properties, but within the city of Bismarck, really, the, the amount of buildable land really doesn't play into very much at all the valuation. A lot is worth X amount, regardless of it's where the setback line would be. So from, if this was in the city, obviously playing the hypothetical here, wherever that setback be, would not change how our assessors look at the valuation for a piece of property. A lot of that comes into the value of the structure itself, not so much on the underlying land component. So I just thought I'd offer that. I, once again, can't say if that's how the county would look at it, but that's at least how cities would typically view that.
Commissioners, additional thoughts?
So when the development was initially planned, and everybody agreed that the Lomar line was the line, how can we now come back and say that it's off by seventy-five feet? That, when they bought the property, they agreed to that line. So now we're sitting here going, well, it's great that most of the people actually come out ahead, but by agreeing to this, we know we're affecting at least three.
So, prior to any of us sitting on this commission, or this, on this committee, the Lomar line was interpreted to be, could be reset if there were measurements done because someone brought in fill work, and that had been what had been interpreted. I'm not saying anyone here at this table agreed to that, that's what was interpreted, and that's why there are homes that now, under the court ruling that came out, were now over the line. So interpretation of what was the rule, and how it was enforced, changed by a court ruling twelve months ago or so. That's what's driving all of this.
So you, there, there's no way to give those specific homeowners a variance? I mean, it's obvious, it was an error between government and the public. It isn't that the city's out trying to tear their house down, and I don't believe anybody built their house inappropriately on purpose, but to, to change everything seems to go too far. I mean, there's got to be a way to give them a, a permit for their house being where it is. And there's only a handful of people, it sounds like, what, four of you?
More now.
Ten? So we're going to change everything out there for ten houses out of how many hundred lots? I don't know, it just seems like there's another way to fix this other than, you know, it's like we're throwing the baby with, out with the bathwater.
Appreciate your comments, Commissioner Field. Commissioners, additional comments? No others? Okay, well, we have a motion on the table, and a second to approve. I guess I, before we get to that point, I'll throw my thoughts out there, and my thoughts are not a lot different than Commissioner Field's. It, it feels like we're changing the rules in the middle of the game, and I really believe that there are better ways to do this. I did a little bit of research on the Board of Adjustment, and thought that that would be a possibility. I know that they won't change anything due to financial hardship, but it seems like this particular situation involves more than just financial hardship.
According to legal, according to legal counsel, it would not fit through Board of Adjustment, because that was advised already.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Schmitz. I just, I'm, I'm not in agreement with how, how it's being handled. So with that, Sarah, I'll, I'll call for, call for a vote.
Commissioner Field?
No.
Commissioner Wangen?
No.
Commissioner Lukens? Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
And Sheriff Schwartz?
No, the motion does not, does not go. So I'll ask for additional motion.
Does it just die?
It dies, so, but we, the agenda item can't die, so... I guess you're absolutely right, Commissioner Shell. It's a done deal.
Yep.
Yeah. With that, we'll move on to item number J under our regular agenda. Northwood Estates, Block 3, Lot 8, and it's a request for a special use permit, and Jenny is going to provide us with staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, Justin Jones is requesting approval of a special use permit to increase the allowable area of accessory buildings to 3,200 square feet on Lot 8, Block 3, Northwood Estates replat. The request is located north of Bismarck, east of U.S. Highway 83, between 97th Avenue Northeast and 110th Avenue Northeast, along the east side of Olive Lane. It consists of 2.32 acres. The property is zoned rural residential and is large enough to have a 3,200-square-foot accessory building with approval of a special use. Mr. Jones indicated that if the special use is approved, the existing accessory structure on site will be removed, and a new 3,200-square-foot building would be constructed in the same location. The public has been notified of this request. A notice was published in the Tribune on March 14th and 21st, and 31 postcards were mailed to the owners of nearby properties on March 14th. We have received one written comment that was in favor of that, this request, and was submitted to you guys earlier today. This request was evaluated according to the standards contained in the Comprehensive Plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and state law. As a result of all the findings contained in the staff report, staff find that the proposed special use permit would not adversely impact public health, safety, and general welfare, and is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, Code of Ordinances, and state law. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit to increase the allowable area of accessory buildings to 3,200 square feet on Lot 8, Block 3, Northwood Estates replat with the following condition: The existing building must be removed prior to the issuance of a building permit. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners, questions for Jenny? Not seeing or hearing any?
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I'll open up the public hearing for this agenda item. Is either the requester or a representative here?
Hello, Justin Jones. Pretty straightforward. Tried to look at an alternative of adding on to the building, but between codes and then the engineer, it was just decided that the best action forward would be to remove it, and then I'm just dealing with one nice structure that I can navigate water around and you're not, doesn't look a little bit hot spot, so. And a new building would go right over where the existing building is. It would start right there, so it would have to be demolished before any new construction would take place.
Commissioners, questions for Justin? I'm not seeing or hearing any.
Okay, thank you.
Good to go. The podium may be, will be open here momentarily, and if anyone else would care to step up and address this agenda item? And I'm not seeing or hearing anybody, so with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, this is a request for a special use. Jenny, any final?
No, it's been a long night.
Thank you. This is a request for a special use permit. Staff recommends approval with conditions. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Move to approve with conditions.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Wogan.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Zent. Any additional discussion? Sarah, please call roll.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, the motion is approved. Moving on to item K under our regular agenda, Treetop Second Edition, Block 1, Lot 3, and it's a request for a special use permit, and Lauren's going to provide us with staff briefing.
Hello again, Chairman Schwartz and Commissioners. Malloy 57 LLC is requesting approval of a special use permit for a drive-through in conjunction with a restaurant on Lot 3, Block 1, Treetop Second Edition. This request is on a project area of 52,164 square feet and is located in north Bismarck on the west side of Highway 83 Northeast and the south side of 57th Avenue Northeast. The property is zoned CG commercial. A drive-through is allowed in this zoning district as a special use permit with approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Adjacent uses to this property include undeveloped commercial land and an auto dealership to the north across 57th Avenue Northeast, single-family residences, townhomes, and undeveloped residential land to the west, retail stores to the south, and Costco wholesale to the east across Highway 83 Northeast. The property has been identified as destination mixed use in the future land use plan, which are the major commercial and employment centers that serve the entire regional trade area of Bismarck as well as visitors. The public has been duly notified of this request. A notice was published in the Bismarck Tribune on March 14th and 21st, and 13 postcards were mailed to the owners of nearby properties on March 14th. Staff have not received any written public comments for this request. However, staff did receive two phone calls. One was mainly curious about the potential restaurant that will be here, and the other was concerned for the increased traffic adjacent to the residential properties to the west. However, the access that goes through this subdivision is not directly adjacent to that residential to the west, so it would be slightly offset. The request was evaluated according to the standards contained within the Comprehensive Plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and relevant state law. As a result of all findings contained in the staff report, city Bismarck staff find that the proposed special use permit would not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this special use permit for a drive-through in conjunction with the restaurant on Lot 3, Block 1, Treetop Second Edition. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for Lauren. I'm not seeing any, Lauren, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to open up the public hearing for this, and we must have a representative coming to the podium. Thank you again, Chair Schwartz.
Yes, representing Malloy 57 on this. Yeah, just to speak to what Lauren had mentioned before, this is a CG, heavy commercially zoned properties. The drive-through would access onto a private road, which is, which is out there, is built now. You can't see it on that image right there, but there is a private road that has been built there. So no access on the state, private road that is maintained between all these groups who own these lots. There's really not much to it. It's fairly standard as far as required here, because we're meeting all the parking ordinances, meeting all the stacking spaces that are necessary for a drive-through. I can certainly answer any questions if you have them, with the exception of the one that probably everybody always wants to ask when it's a drive-through.
Uh-huh. Commissioners, questions for Landon? Commissioners Zent?
So Landon, that road coming, would it come south down through Barbara?
Commissioners Zent, yes, thank you. It does travel north to south, so there's a private drive that is.
And then come over, okay.
Commissioners, additional questions? Thank you, Landon.
Thank you.
With that, the podium is open for others.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Andrew Hadlick, and I live at 5606 Calvert Drive in Bismarck, and, I probably can't see, but I live in this property right here. This is the proposed change, and here's the neighborhood. I'm here today to speak in opposition of the special use permit application to install a drive-through in conjunction with a restaurant at 5511 Treetop Lane. As a resident in Silent Heights, I'm concerned about the potential impact this project will have on our neighborhood. My family went around our neighborhood and asked who would be in favor of a restaurant with a drive-through. Please view this map that shows most of the homeowners in the immediate area oppose the special use permit. Everything that's colored in pink are those who oppose, and we do have a petition with city insurers that I will leave. I got copies for all of you. These are some of the concerns that were discussed when visiting with our neighbors. Increased traffic and safety concerns. A drive-through restaurant will significantly impact vehicle traffic, particularly during peak hours. Increased traffic poses safety risks to residents, cyclists, and especially children in our neighborhood. This could also cause congestion on surrounding streets, impacting residential access and the emergency vehicle response times. I ask, has there been a traffic study done on this proposed use permit? Noise and light pollution. The constant noise of idling cars, speaker systems, and late-night traffic will disrupt the quiet residential character of the neighborhood. Noise carries in this part of the, part of the town. When we have our windows open at night, we can hear when Costco is cleaning their parking lots, and they do it at least two times a week, and we can hear that noise, and this is obviously a lot closer to our neighborhood. Extended business hours may result in excessive noise during early mornings and late nights. Light pollution from signage, headlights, and the facility itself will interfere with a peaceful environment that residents expect. Negative impact on property values. High-traffic drive-throughs will likely lower property values in nearby residential areas. Potential buyers may be deterred in the increase of noise, traffic, and commercial activity in what's supposed to be a quiet neighborhood. Incompatibility with neighborhood character. A drive-through restaurant does not align with the existing character of a residential neighborhood. The zoning classification was designed to protect residential integrity, and allowing a special use would undermine the intent of the zoning regulations. Public health and environmental concerns. Increased vehicle emissions from idling cars contribute to air pollution, negatively impacting the health of the residents. Litter from fast-food packaging and potential for increased waste disposal may lead to sanitation issues. Potential for increased crime and loitering. Drive-through restaurants often attract late-night activity, increasing the potential for loitering and minor crimes. A commercial establishment with extended hours can create a magnet for unwanted activity that disrupts neighborhood peace. Precedent for future commercial development. Approving this permit could pave the way for additional commercial uses that further erode the residential character of the neighborhood. It may also encourage future developers to request similar exceptions, making it harder to maintain the balance between residential and commercial zones. Alternative locations do exist. There are likely more appropriate locations in commercially zoned areas nearby with a restaurant with a drive-through would be a better fit. There doesn't seem to be a shortage of lots near the subject that could occupy a restaurant with a drive-through. Within one mile of the subject, the lot directly south of IHOP and Pan Express are currently listed for sale. The lot located directly south of Culvers is also listed for sale, which I will add is nearly the same lot size as our subject. In conclusion, I urge the commission to prioritize the interest of the residents or the commercial gain of a single business. Our neighborhood has expressed many negative impacts if this special use permit is approved. I ask that each of you ask yourself, are there any other restaurants with a drive-through this close to a single-family residential development in Bismarck? And if this special use permit is proposed in your backyard, is this something that you would want? Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate your time and consideration, and thank you for my children running around in the back there.
Andrew, thank you for your comments. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Andrew? Andrew, were you aware of the zoning of the property? And I'm assuming it's behind you?
It's to the side of us.
To the side of you?
To the east, yeah.
So your house faces, is it Cavalier?
It faces south, so.
It faces south? But it's on Cavalier Drive?
Calvert Drive.
Calvert Drive?
Yep.
Okay. And again, I'll ask the question, were you aware of the zoning of the other property?
Aware of the zoning, yes. We are under, we know that it is zoned commercial, but what we're not, what we're against is the drive-through restaurant. That's what we're against.
Okay, very good. Again, thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Do you want me to leave a petition with you guys?
Certainly.
Thank you for your time.
I'm back. Thank you, Chair Schwartz. Just to, just to address some of the issues that were brought up, so, and you brought them up yourself, the area is zoned CG. That's, that's heavy commercial by the city of Bismarck standards. Concerns about traffic and things like that, understandable, of course, but this is at the intersection effectively of two arterial roads which aren't intended to drive traffic. That is the point of 57th and Highway 3. They're there to move traffic. The fact that the special use is a requirement for the drive-through, but a restaurant, bar, 24-hour shopping, all of these things are allowed today by right in CG zoning. To say that the additional traffic and additional lights and noise that we have from a drive-through are significantly different than what they could be for really any other use that could be proposed in here is, can be a bit of a stretch. The uses are allowed are really run the gamut of everything within commercial uniting, with the exception of sort of industrial uses, but I can answer any questions.
Landon, I'm sorry. Are there additional questions for Landon? Commissioners Zent, go ahead.
I don't know if I read this, read it or not, but is it just a drive-through or is it also a sit-down restaurant that you can drive through?
It's just both.
Okay, good.
And then my question for you would be, was, is there any type of buffering proposed between the business and the residential area?
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. So there's not a proposed buffering between this and the residential area, because there is another lot, there's the private road, and then another lot to the west between here and the residential area.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Landon? I guess we're good, thank you.
Thank you.
The podium is once again open for anyone that would care to address this agenda item. I'm not seeing or hearing any, so I'm going to close our public hearing on it. Excuse me, Lauren, any additional comments?
No additional comments.
All right, thank you. With that, Commissioners, this is a request for a special use permit. Staff recommends approval. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Zent?
Second.
A second? Okay, a second from Commissioner Lukens. Any additional discussion? Not seeing any? So with that, Sarah, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Wogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
And Chair Schwartz?
Yes, motion is approved. Moving on to item number L on our regular agenda, animal services and boarding. It's a zoning ordinance text amendment, and Isaac is going to provide us with staff report.
Yes, thank you, Chair Schwartz and Commissioners. We have finally arrived at our last public hearing of the night, and if you want, I can try to stretch it out so we reach our record of long public hearings, but I don't think we want to be here till 11:10, so I won't do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The, so for this last regular agenda item, the Community Development Department is requesting approval of a zoning ordinance text amendment to revise and clarify some zoning requirements for animal boarding and similar non-veterinary animal services, as well as veterinary animal services, just to make sure we're being comprehensive with things. Specifically, this will be looking at sections 140203, section 140307, 140308, 140410, 140412, 140414, 140415, and 140417. Do not worry, there will not be a test at the end of this. But to try, be a little more clear about that, that those stated sections refer to definitions, use groups, the special use processes, and relevant zoning districts that would be impacted by this. So as you can see on the screen here, the intent here is just to do some housekeeping clarifications that will act as sort of a bridge, as we are in the process of doing the full zoning code rewrite as part of the upcoming land development code. Specifically, as mentioned, we're clarifying some definitions of veterinary and non-veterinary animal services, including certain business types such as grooming and training of animals, which were a little unclear right now, and then looking at adjusting some staff procedures regarding animal boarding specifically. So these are some things that staff have. So, these are some things that staff have received inquiries about on general topics, and as of right now, we really just have two main categories for customary household pets in Title 14. That is, if we can go to the next slide now, pet shops, or, you know, the sale of pets, veterinary services for pets, whether that be a small animal veterinary clinic or a animal hospital, which could use other animals as well. And then there's a, a lack of clarity for where other businesses that would be kind of in-between those categories, like training and grooming, for example, where those fit in right now. Additionally, kennels, as shown here, the, the, the point of the boxes on the left side is to try show the main two categories, but the reason that kennels there is in sort of a dashed box is because it's its own thing, but the criteria currently are the same criteria as animal hospitals. So, even though a kennel might not be performing animal hospital activities, it was still going off of the same criteria. So we were looking at that and seeing if anything needed to be cleaned up there as well, at least as far as the technical criteria go. It's been noted as lacking some flexibility or clarity. So, as a reminder, planning staff requested direction from the Planning and Zoning Commission on September 25th, 2024, and the commission addressed, directed staff, it has been a long night for all of us, directed staff to address these issues. And so the proposed changes, which I'll touch on here in a moment, were the result of conversations between community development staff, both planning and building inspections, and public health, and police department staff, namely animal control and the like. And so, on the right side of the screen there, you'll see the proposed changes. So for pet shops, we are sort of redefining this as animal services, non-veterinary, and explicitly stating that other things beyond just the sale of pets are included in there, such as grooming, training, et cetera. We are also including animal boarding in that new term as well. There's a couple different classes, which we'll get into in a second, but, so kennels are now being sort of moved into what we are now referring to as animal boarding, and then animal hospital and small animal veterinary clinic are essentially staying the same, but we're just redefining them, just changing the, the terms there into veterinary services for large or small animals. And there are updated definitions in the definition section of the code as well, but the only possible change here in terms of not just clarifying, if we go to the next slide here, is with regard to how we are treating these non-veterinary animal services. We are proposing three different classes of this. Class one would involve the sale and/or related services for these customary household pets, so sale, training, grooming, the like. Class two would be all services that are permitted in a class one, in addition to animal boarding, if it is remaining within a building, entirely enclosed within a building. Class three would be all those services provided by class one, as well as boarding, which might have an outdoor exercise yard or recreation area, and places may also provide commercial breeding services, but they, of course, do not have to, to be still considered class three. To note the criteria for approval of these class two and class three, actually, if we can go to the next slide, this will maybe be a little more clear. So, this slide here is just showing where each of these will be permitted. The P for permitted, which would just be by right, no particular special permit needed. The S with the asterisk there would be an administrative special use. The small animal veterinary clinic right now, which is then changed to veterinary services, small animals, that is currently an administrative special use, so we're proposing the animal boarding be adjusted to an administrative special use. The animal hospital right now is a full special use, we are not proposing any change there, that would still be a full special use permit that would come before the board here. The difference would be those kennel-like services would be done administratively via the same criteria as if it were a, you know, brought to you today. Namely, there is a, a required distance between an outdoor exercise yard or recreation area and residentially zoned properties or residential houses or, and the like, and that was one thing that in our conversations with public health and police, they recommended keeping that distance, which is currently 1,000 feet from the nearest residence or residentially zoned property. That was their recommendation to maintain that distance, so we have kept that in the draft as of right now. Other things, just to make sure I'm getting everything here, so you considered this request at your last meeting in February 26th, and then the public was notified of this via publications in the Bismarck Tribune on March 14th and 21st. Staff have not received any comments regarding this request prior to this meeting, and as a cumulative result of all the findings contained in the staff reports before you, City of Bismarck staff find that the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment would not adversely impact public health, safety, and general welfare, and that it is generally consistent with our comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and the relevant state law. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the zoning ordinance text amendment to revise and clarify zoning requirements for animal boarding and similar non-animal veterinary services, as well as animal veterinary services in the previously stated sections of Title 14, which I won't belabor you with again. Does the commission have any questions for me at this time?
Commissioners, questions for Isaac. Commissioner Zent?
Isaac, um, so, these changes, will it affect new businesses, or how does it affect the current businesses that are in town or just outside of town? You know, the veterinarians, the, like even the Runnings or now Fleet Pharma that are going to be selling animal services products, how does, all, will, will everything fit under this?
Sure, so Commissioners Zent, Chair Schwartz, and Commissioners, if we could pull up the, the slide again with showing what is allowed where. The, the general intent is to try, show that wherever a pet store was allowed before, that is still the case, we did not change, you know, add it to a new place or take it away from somewhere, that's still the case, but we're being more clear that the other services are permitted there as well. Similar to the, the boarding portion, we tried to be as consistent as possible to say if they were permitted in that district before, they're still permitted there, just trying to clean up the processes of how it's handled on the staff's side. So whether it's an administrative permit, a full special use permit, or just permitted by right, the processes, we, we tried to keep it as similar or identical as possible, and just clarify sort of how that was handled, if that answers your question.
Oh, yes, thank you, and I think you and the staff did a great job on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zent. Commissioner Shell?
Isaac, as maybe a callback to one of our previous items, is there any value in exploring if P public should be included in any of these for what uses might take place at the Burley County Fairgrounds?
Commissioner Shell, that's a, a excellent point. The, if we can pull up that slide again. So, in general, the, the class one is permitted in those districts because it has previously been included in Retail Group A, we've sort of shifted it out of there, but maintained the definition the same. In terms of whether or not these particular things in the districts they are tentatively proposed to be permitted in, we can certainly talk about including that in the P public district, that conversation, I guess, did not take place because things such as Retail Group A, or some of the similar use groups were not clearly permitted in P public, but we can certainly have that conversation if you, if the commission believes it would be relevant to be included.
Maybe just to follow up, if, if Burley County, or BSC, or City of Bismarck, or any public property had six dogs in for a training class on an afternoon, would this ordinance apply to that, or because that's not the principle? Maybe, maybe the training probably is the thing that I'm thinking of, that those public buildings or public parks might be the location that some of that activity is happening in the realm of training, not so much selling dogs, buying cats, but training I could see happening in some of the public domains.
Sure, so Commissioner Shell, Chair Schwartz, and Commissioners, the, the intent of this is to address businesses that, you know, would carry on these, you know, these types of business. Whether or not there were, you know, excursions or things to other locations is perhaps outside the scope, but if a, you know, business location wanted to have this type of operation, that's what this is trying to address.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shell. Commissioners, additional questions?
So, these revisions would have no effect on the Newans Arena in South Bismarck for training sessions and clinics that are sponsored and, and put on by private businesses?
Commissioner Wagon, I'm unfamiliar with that specific location, but if it is a permitted use there currently, it would still be permitted with these tentatively proposed changes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wagon. Additional questions for Isaac? Not hearing any, Isaac? Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll open the public hearing on this agenda item. Is there anyone here that would care to speak to this agenda item? And there doesn't appear to be anybody. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Commissioners, this is a zoning ordinance text amendment. Staff recommendation is to approve, what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Zent?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Lukens. Any additional discussion? I'm not seeing or hearing any. Sarah, please call roll.
Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagon?
Yes.
Commissioner Lukens?
Yes.
Commissioner Shell?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Zent?
Yes.
Chair Schwartz?
Yes, motion is approved. We have other business on our agenda this evening, and I think Daniel has a question for us, so.
I'm sorry, Chair, you might have to remind me.
It is late. You were asking about the permit pages?
Oh, yes, I, okay, thank you for jogging my memory, yes. So, for, for many, many years, we've included within your packet information on building permits with issue within the last month in a table. So we've done it for a long time, that information is available on the website as well, and so we would just like to ask you if that's something that you value having in your packet, or if that's something that you'd like to get from the website, we could always include a link as well from, to the website. So we, just in terms of creating it in each month and putting it in the packet, if that's something you value, we'll keep doing, if not, we could stop.
What are your thoughts, Commissioners? You're indifferent?
Okay.
I think we all feel the same, then. With that, Daniel?
Okay, thank you.
All right. Our next meeting is going to be scheduled for April 23rd, 2025, 5 o'clock. Thank you all this evening for your, for your time and attentiveness, and for staff also. So with that, I adjourn the meeting.